The city will be analyzing potential locations in the community, seeking public input and determining feasibility and costs for such a project.
Encinitas creates opportunities for everyone within our community. You can see that in our investment in transportation and mobility, homeless action plan, our parks, recreation, and cultural arts programs. Let's do the same for housing in our community. Let's continue to work together ensuring a housing plan that is the best for everyone in our community.
And together with your input, we help our beloved communities plan for smart, sustainable growth. It's no secret that Nor—
Okay, the next item would normally be special presentation and proclamations, but we have none today, and that brings us to oral communications. How many do we have?
We do have 10, and before I start that, I'll just note that Councilmember San Antonio and Councilmember O'Hara have joined the meeting.
Okay. And so we will get right to it. We'll do three minutes oral communications. We're trying to keep it to 30 minutes as we normally do.
And then just a reminder, oral communications are the time to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda, and oral communication slips are due to the city clerk prior to oral communications beginning, so at this point, we will not accept any additional oral communication slips. The first three speakers, Joy Lines, Erin McKellen, Adam Miller.
Thank you, city clerk. Allow me the privilege of taking a few minutes to read a statement I wrote for the benefit of the public. We live in a democracy where the most important tenet is that your voice matters. It's how you participate in the public process. Some simply use your voice to vote, and increasingly, many of you are writing emails, asking for meetings, and coming before us to tell us your concerns and your vision for a better Encinitas. I invite you to continue to come here and to speak freely. Even when I don't share your opinions, your voice informs me, and frequently, it sways my decision-making. It's wrong for you to have to hear from the dais, as you did at our last week's Santa Fe Drive special meeting, that your leaders think that you are paid actors, paid to deliver propaganda. I don't believe that you are. You are our neighbors, who've taken the time to come and engage, and you deserve to be listened to. It's wrong thinking for your representatives here on the dais to try to disenfranchise you and discredit your voices. Your voices matter. I'll go further. Neighbors, your voices are all that matters. I love Encinitas. I look forward to hearing from all of you. I'm not here to attack. I'm here to calmly and clearly state for the record that your voices always matter. So continue to let us know how we can do better to raise you up and to help you be heard. You and your voices inform and educate us and are all that matters.
Thank you.
Erin? Erin McKellen? There's no time donations for oral communications, so, Adam, you're next.
Yeah, I think we had a clarifier.
Okay.
Just because I did have two time donations, but I think it was put in for 8G, and I'd originally put it in as a—
Yeah, there's no time donations for oral communications—
So should I wait?
—you can get them on 8G.
Are you talking about 8G?
Are you talking about 8G?
I am, yes.
Yeah, then you wait for 8G.
No problem.
So let's put those two together. Okay, Natalie Sitoun, followed by Judy Burlefine, and then Dave Dean.
Hi, Natalie Sitoun Cardiff. Great comments that our voices are being heard now after so many years of not being. So yesterday, we had a really lovely service at the Legion, and we have a community member who actually got up really early and power washed everything to make it so special, Dave Dean. So these are the things that make the community so great. So he went above and beyond. He cleaned the picnic tables. He cleaned the front of the building. He cleaned the stairs. So hopefully you all, the four of you all who were there, noticed how great it was. So thank you. It's our community members who make this place so special. And it was so good to see our veterans honored. We, the city was remiss in honoring Councilman Schaefer at the proclamation, so his service has definitely not gone unrecognized or not appreciated, so we appreciate that. And lastly, thank you all so much for correcting Santa Fe. It was such a disaster. It's been such a disaster. And for the record, there are many spots—I've addressed this with a city manager—that the asphalt that has been installed is sinking in a lot of spots, and it's sinking in one of the spots where the gentleman's wife spoke, and it was reported the week before the accident occurred. It was documented, so there is a definite defect, and I'm asking that the city and the city manager make sure that TriGroup is notified of this, because we're going to need some funds to offset some of the lawsuits that we're going to have to settle in award. And we've known that these defects are, they're known defects. It's bad. There's a big sinking spot in front of the—it's in the bike path in front of the medical office building, so I hope that we can readjust our thinking in the way that the staff operates and the staff actually gets out there and out of their offices and sees the progress in how our projects are being worked and has more eyes on CIP, because if they had seen the way that this project had progressed, we wouldn't have gotten to this point, and good money wouldn't go after bad. So it's—we really need to pay more attention and time management and reassessing. So thank you for changing Santa Fe. It was desperately needed.
Thank you.
Judy Burlefine, followed by Dave Dean, Tim Bratton, and then Scott Campbell.
Good evening. I ran into a neighbor this morning whose son goes to Polackee Central, and she said it was—they were really excited and happy that there's a rapidly flashing beacon at the roundabout in Lucadia. Thank you. Good work. So I'm responding to comments made by Councilmember O'Hara last week's meeting and feeling a little remorseful that I need to do this, as I've met four times—or maybe more—with Councilmember O'Hara, and am surprised by statements. Councilmember O'Hara spent 10 minutes using vague terms and innuendo to malign the volunteer work that I do. He did not mention my name specifically, though he did call out the organization that I chair, Encinitas Bike Walk. First, he commented on my quote-unquote "agenda." Of course, I have an agenda. I hope you do too. My agenda is to be able to go from point A to point B in a car, or on a bike, or on foot, and arrive at the destination intact without injury. Councilmember O'Hara stated that I was distributing propaganda. When I asked what he meant by propaganda, he responded, "You know what I'm talking about." Though I don't, here's my best guess. I share information with friends and neighbors about the decisions the city council is making. I share it in emails and newsletters and walking door-to-door handing out flyers. And how do I pay for it? Out of my pocket. Many of the people I speak with agree with me, and some do not. Some submit comments to the city council in their own words. Some are either busy or lack confidence and use my sample text. For some, it's the first time taking a step from being a resident to becoming a citizen. Hold on. It's actually touching to witness this transformation from resident to citizen. Engaged citizenry, it's a sign of a healthy community. So I'd like to end with an aspiration for our city. I'm grateful that we are all here together, all citizens of the great town of Encinitas. May we have the wisdom and compassion to guide our city council members toward actions that benefit all residents of Encinitas—
Thank you.
—and move the community forward.
I gotta be fair. I have to be fair with everybody, and for the third beep, if you can, turn off the microphone at the third beep, just so we're equal with everyone. Especially Dave.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council staff. Tonight, I choose to speak on some of the homeless issues that we're plighted with at the moment in our city.
And this is different than the item? The services contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in general. And I understand that part, some of that part, and not well as I should, but what I wanted to share with you is I believe that the homeless population is growing in Encinitas by my eyes, and so I want that to be known and stated, because I see it each and every morning. I just spoke with Captain Watts, so I'll be working with him moving forward on some of these issues that I see in the streets. And I do see it regularly, daily, out there, and I would—I have never seen a city employees that were hired, I understand, to work towards the homeless on the streets, and so I see a lot of it out there, but never do I see any on-the-street, boots-on-the-ground communication with the homeless and city people. So I would encourage those people to be on the streets where they can do good. I'm sure they're working hard in the offices, but I don't see them on the streets. So that's one issue. And then when you look at the expansion that's being talked about with the CRC, I would like you to keep in mind the overall cost that's involved with that. And specifically, what I mean is each time that we have to send a fire truck or police out to deal with the issue, that costs money. And if—the—I don't know all the numbers, but if you double the size of what the CRC's doing now that's attracting some of the homeless, all those auxiliary costs are going to double too. So look at the big picture, the big numbers, because I don't want future council members left to solve a problem saying the prior council messed up and they should have done this. And it's common vernacular here to criticize prior councils for things they didn't act appropriately on, and this is your chance to get it right and not burden future councils with situations that we weren't prepared for. So look at the overall financial numbers, and believe me, I'm compassionate, but the best use for the homeless is not with downtown activity, because you can do so much more if you spend less money on the real estate, and you can help so many more people if you move them to a more affordable location. And it should be about helping the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tim Bratton, followed by Scott Campbell, Julia Chen here, and then Lisa Provenzano.
Good evening, Mayor Ayers and council members. I'm Tim Bratton, and I'm here representing the Quiet Zone Trainhorn Group. I want to say thank you for continuing to pursue the Federal Railroad Administration grant that can finally bring a citywide quiet zone. Residents are deeply grateful that the city is pushing hard towards the January 7th, 2026 FRA deadline. Tonight, I want to briefly reaffirm the community's support and highlight how Encinitas can significantly approve, improve our chances of winning this grant by following the strategy that Mayor Ayers referenced, the Davis method. What the Davis method teaches. The city of Davis and Yolo County won their 4.16 million FRA grant by doing three things extremely well. Number one, broad coalition building. Number two, strong political backing. Number three, demonstrating community readiness. Encinitas can replicate all three. Residents are ready to help. Our community is prepared to mobilize immediately to strengthen the application. Specifically, residents can gather dozens, potentially hundreds, of public support letters emphasizing safety, sleep quality, rail corridor livability, and citywide benefit once the horns are eliminated. Assist with outreach to Representative Mike Levin, Senator Padilla, and Senator Schiff. The same level of congressional involvement that helped Davis succeed. Coordinate letters from local organizations, including neighborhood associations, business groups, mobility advocates, and environmental groups. Community support was a major reason Davis's application stood out, and we can surpass it. What we ask the city to do now, follow the Davis method. The city needs a strong support package that accompanies the technical documents. Here is the resident requested laundry list that we believe will materially strengthen the FRA competitive score. Agency and institution letters. NCTD, explicit support for the quiet zone. Sandag, regional safety and mobility alignment. CPUC, confirmation of cooperation and safety improvements. Political support. Representative Mike Levin, critical. Davis's award was publicly championed by their representative. Senator Padilla and Senator Schiff. Congressional letters materially strengthened FRA competitiveness, and of course, city council and the mayor signed letters of support. If the David method shows anything, it's that letters matter, coalitions matter, and political support matters. Residents are ready to help gather every letter, rally every partner, and support the city team in every way necessary to deliver a winning application. Thank you for your leadership. Let's bring the quiet zone home.
Okay, good evening, council. My name is Scott Campbell, live in Encinitas District 1. First off, we don't live in a democracy. We live in a democratic republic. There's a big difference there, and that's why the council's up there to represent the people. This is kind of a one-year anniversary for some of the people up there, and they ran on campaigns of roads and drainage and good things like that, and it's—I'm blown away at the ongoing new roads in town, and the drainage projects are going. There's two on the agenda tonight. The road right out here, F Street, the Cadia Boulevard, is beautiful. I can't believe it took so long to get this stuff. It's great. Earlier this week, there was a commission meeting, and I've seen this pattern before where—and I urged the council to do something about it. I'm not sure exactly what, but some of the people on the commissions too often appear to not even know the agenda items. They don't—they are barely familiar with the topic, and it's sad. It's sad that they're making decisions and they don't know what they're really talking about. Now, we just—we'd heard another woman up here, and she reviews meetings, and that's great, spreads it out. I do that personally. There's at least 10 people in this room that get my personal emails. Those people are all far more informed than many of the council members on the topics. So I guess my ask is, maybe the council can do some of their own review and send them out to the commissioners to let them know what's going on. In particular, there was a big hubbub about lanes at the mobility meeting, and I love it. There's 11-foot lanes on the striping. We just heard endlessly about Santa Fe and 10-foot lanes, but the new policy and staff jumped right on it, and they put this commission in place and said the new policy is 11-foot lanes everywhere. They weren't aware of this kind of stuff, and it caused a lot of aggravation and anguish, and the meeting went too long, and it was inefficient. So that's just really what I want to do, ask, get on top of these commissions a little bit more. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julia Chen here with California Cultural Protection Network. I'm also a resident of Cardiff, and as has been reported by numerous outlets, including The New York Times, Politico, and The Guardian, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, or BOAM, is expected to release a new oil and gas leasing program any day now, which will likely include California and marine sanctuaries. After working on the natural resources damage assessment following the Amplify Oil spill in 2021 in Huntington Beach, which also affected our beaches, I know that new oil drilling has no place in our California coastline. I wanted to bring this to your attention. As you know, our community's economy— I wanted to bring this to your attention. As you know, our community's economy and quality of life rely on clean beaches, a healthy ocean ecosystem, tourism, and the fishing industry. A major spill could devastate, have devastating, long-lasting impacts on local businesses, families, and livelihoods. This matters to local residents and businesses, and I wanted to ask you to get ready to speak out, whether that's through a resolution or through a letter. We are also organizing a public event, which will be in early December, and I'll have more to share on that soon. Spills are an inevitable part of oil drilling. Roughly 880,000 gallons enter our marine environment in North America, even if everything goes according to plan. So oil drilling means oil spilling. There have been no new leases in California since 1984, and we hope it stays that way. The oil and gas industry already have more than 12 million acres of federal waters under lease, and less than 20% of those acres started producing oil as of December 2024. Americans want to protect U.S. coastlines. A 2024 poll found strong support among Americans for protecting U.S. waters. Two-thirds of American voters support their elected officials protecting U.S. coastlines from new oil drilling, with similar support amongst registered voters in coastal states. So I thank you for your leadership and commitment to safeguarding our future, and standing up for our local economy and environment is critical. Available for questions and look forward to your support and engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpeople, and first responders. Councilman Schaefer, early in the year, spoke about needing to have an emergency evacuation plan. I am someone who lives on Quail Gardens Drive, but it's not only that. It's a Leavenhein or Hain. It's going to have the same thing that we have on Quail Gardens Drive. There is no, anybody, nobody can think about of what could be the evacuation plan. All the homes and developments there all feed out onto Quail Gardens Drive. And that's before the new developments are there. Wednesday, September 10, around 1:30 in the afternoon, a brush fire broke out on Lucadia Boulevard between Quail Gardens Drive and Garden View. Drivers going east on Lucadia Boulevard were redirected to Quail Gardens Drive. The cars were backed up from Encinitas Boulevard to almost Lucadia Boulevard. And this was at 1:30 in the afternoon. It wasn't even during rush hour. What would have happened if it were at that time? Part of the problem is the left turn lane is short. It fits five cars. The fifth car goes through the red arrow. And, and then it backs out into the lane, so nobody can move. They can't go forward. They can't go left. Traffic was at a standstill. It had to be at least two hours. That's all I saw of it. You can look at this as, that was an unplanned simulation of what would happen if there was an emergency. Anyone who saw it or was in it would know that there's just not a solution. So this is all before that. Also, the Know Your Rights flyers, I'm not sure how to get those. People know that you okayed it, but we don't have them to pass out to anybody. We, there's been, I think there's been an increased police presence in Encinitas at least, because I've seen more cars, or I didn't notice before. But that makes people feel really good. When you point it out to them, they go, oh, yeah, I have seen those. There are still people who don't know that the police are not ICE and cannot do what ICE does. So people by word of mouth are, are letting everyone know. But they said, do you think it's okay if we ask them for their credentials if we get stopped by the real police? So you just don't know. Anyway, so that's it.
And we can't respond, but we can't respond because this is oral comments, but one of the items, the ICE stuff, is Item 10B tonight. So you'll hear more about it, and you can, we'll discuss it then.
That concludes oral communications.
Okay. Let's see. Let me get to the, so are there any, there was no closed session, so we do not have a report from closed session. Do, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the posted agenda. And then moving to the consent calendar, Items 8G and 8I have been pulled by members of the public.
Okay. And would the council like to pull any other items on the consent calendar? Taking this, no, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve all other items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. Let's call the question.
Councilmember San Antonio? Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously. That takes us to Item 8G. And we have one speaker, and that is Adam Miller. Adam, do you want a staff report? Or you just want to speak? Okay. And he does have two time donations, Aaron McKellen and Scott Campbell, who are both present.
And if, if you guys wouldn't mind, I have, maybe?
Yeah. And if you could, Adam, if you can move a little closer to the microphone, that would help.
Thank you. So nine minutes total. I won't take that much, but I appreciate it. And is there something I can advance on this work?
Yep.
Okay. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Adam Miller. I'm an Encinitas resident since 2003. And this is a picture of my, me and two of my kids. I have three outside our home that we purchased in 2014. At that time, we had no problems with our home. I've been here before to speak about this issue, and I will tie it into specifically to the drainage on, on Vulcan with Item 8G. When I've spoken here before, I've openly been frustrated, angry. Tonight, I'm scared, really, really scared about this weekend. And I'm hoping that I leave here.
Address us.
I'm a man of the people.
I know. But it's just better if you address us. It goes into the microphone better and it gets on record better.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm hoping that I leave here, though, with a sense of relief. So moving forward, just so we talk about where I can orientate you guys to what I'm talking about. This is a map of north end of Lucadia. Hillcrest Drive, you can see, does this work as a pointer? There? Hillcrest Drive, you can see the tennis courthouse there. Circled are two catchment drains, and then a Hygiea outflow. And then my house is right there where it says flood zone. And this is a site, a three-acre site of a future development plan that's already been funded. It's shovel-ready, and it's already been approved by, by council and by the commission. And that, that site is held up because of the issues that I'm going to bring to you guys right now, and that would provide all the funding that you need for the project that we're talking about within one year. Not only that, but all other projects that we have. It's roughly three-quarters of a million dollars in tax revenue that this will provide that's being held up because of these issues. Hygiea Avenue is a forgotten avenue. It was last maintained in 1989, per city records. And at the time when we purchased a house, the end of the street looked very much like this. A lot of buy retention in place, no real flooding issues. Again, in 2014, when we purchased a house, lots of buy retention in place at the end of the street, no real flooding issues. And then, as you, and you can see here, the outflow drain that I was talking about. In 2015, when we moved in, that was the first time we'd seen really any rain. And then it didn't rain again for another five years or so. We were in a drought. But we did bring this up to the, to the city at this point and said, hey, we need some help. This is going to be a problem. Nothing was done. You can see in 2015, outside our house, at this point, the city came and, whoops, the city came and leveled this area here, removed all the buy retention. There was no drainage plans that were done. This was against all kind of best management practices laid out by Encinitas municipal codes. And here, again, no grading plan, another picture of the end of the street. And this now, because of that, has resulted in flooding and a lot of property damage. And I'm going to just show you kind of what we're talking about. This map depicts the catchment area of the water that ends up from the blue to the small red area here. That's my house. All of this water from this whole neighborhood is going there. And really, it should go to 8G, to Vulcan. You can see here basically what I would call an aqueduct. All of these are in city curb right-of-way, coming from private properties, all flowing to these two catchment drains, down this drain, out here, down the street, and to my house. A neighborhood's worth of stormwater. Stormwater is not rainwater. Stormwater is environmental hazardous water. It is filled with pollutants, toxins, fertilizers, you name it, it is in there. Animal feces. It ends up in my living room, my daughter's bedroom, my daughter's bathroom, my bedroom, my office, my garage. We have been forced to leave our house on a number of occasions, and we will leave our house this weekend if we don't get some help from council tonight. We will evacuate. We will have to. This is the aqueduct I was referring to up on Hillcrest. And I don't know if you guys can play these videos, but I'll wait till the next one and then hope that you can. But basically, up on Hillcrest, you see inset curb, drains coming from properties. These are either permitted or not. Either way, it's wrong. This is a city storm drain that water comes out of. This is one of the two catchment drains that then goes down to Hygiea Avenue. When it gets down to Hygiea, this will take about five minutes to fill up. Once it does, it doesn't stop until the rain ends. We have 48 hours of rain coming. We will get roughly an Olympic-sized swimming pool worth of water. That's 360,000 gallons of water. It will end up in my yard. You think I'm exaggerating? I'm not. Look at these videos. Hours, hours, hours of this. Look. This was in January of last year. That's not rainwater. That is an environmental hazard. This is an unmaintained. There's lots of flooding issues in Encinitas. Most of them are caused when water just falls on the street, and we have low-lying areas. This isn't, this is an unmaintained, unfinished piece of city infrastructure that concentrates, collects, and discharges with no attempt at mitigation onto a city street and onto private property, my property and the site of a future development plan. $50 million worth of real estate, which will generate almost $1 million of tax revenue for all the projects you're talking about. It's all Luke, you're an ocean guy. Can you bring your kayak over? I'll keep going. Despite taking every reasonable measure to protect our property, we've already sustained hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of damage. We've had multiple flooding events. We followed every city permit to get buy retention on our property. We've had perimeter drains, rain gutters, diversion trenches, sandbags. Sandbags don't stop the tide from coming in. Nothing stops this, except a diversion of this water to properly maintain, properly own city infrastructure. That is 8G. And this weekend, I want you to test 8G with pump trucks at my house, at that drain, to go down to Vulcan and displace that water there. That is the only solution. This is my house. This is a flooding. This seems like a reasonable request. In the short term, a pump truck on Hygiea Friday to Sunday. We have pump trucks. It's just a matter of how you prioritize. I'm asking, please, begging, that you prioritize our property. This seems like something that you guys should do, because right on your website, it says, "The Street Maintenance Division is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of city Encinitas public drainage systems." In the longer term, I've already proposed and paid for four different solutions. They've all been ignored. I don't come here and say there's no solutions. I don't come here with problems. I've already brought solutions forward that have been ignored. I'm begging you. This weekend, please help us so that my family isn't displaced for a month while we have to clean up this mess that is not ours to clean up. And by the way, one last thing, because I have one minute left. This was before you guys, Jim, Luke, Marco, were involved. But look at the items noted for consideration here. Hygiea Avenue Drainage Study, $750,000. That was rejected. Citywide Drainage Master Plan, look at the number, $750,000. I would think that Hygiea Avenue is part of a citywide drainage plan. The money that we're talking about from the Andrews Street Development will give you guys all of these projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go first on, on this one. First of all, I think Hillcrest, what we're talking about tonight in 8G is the Vulcan Main Line South. And this would be Vulcan Main Line North. So it's actually not the same item at all. And what we're talking about tonight is the, the first step in a long time that we've actually taken towards making real progress on, on fixing South Vulcan. And we need to do the same in North Vulcan. And it's really a question of getting, getting something shovel-ready as quickly as we can so that we can get grants to cover portions of the huge project that is Lucadia Drainage. But, but tonight, technically, you're in a different area. Now, your request is duly noted to, and I will turn to staff and have you evaluate the ability to, whether, whether it's appropriate, whether we can do it, have a pump truck there for Thursday where we may get rain. I know I personally will be out there Thursday afternoon and night. I already know I am. I do it every year. And that's how I, I'm very familiar with your, your neighborhood and, and all the neighborhoods around that have been flooding for, before we were a city, and we need to fix it. So, but tonight, we're talking about a, a, going forward with a detailed design, eventually 100% design, on the Main Line Vulcan South, I think is the way I would call it. And I'll make a motion to approve that. And go to Councilmember O'Hara.
Yeah. Just like you said, this is actually a different topic, and I will second your motion to approve. Stunning. I'm a little lost for words on what we just saw. So I definitely, these are the priorities we're looking to do up here, I think. We, I want to follow your sentiment to ask city manager to work with us tomorrow. If I have to come in early, I will. See what we can do to, to address this. Obviously, I think we probably have to talk to our council as well, and legal, what we can and can't do, what we have resources for, and look at all that. I know that, you know, this is an area that has a lot of drainage holes in it, we'll call it, where, just spent, what, a week out there with multiple agents of NCTD going through the, the basin that collects the water, brings it down on, along Vulcan, and the different areas of going both north and south from Union, to make sure that that drainage is set up and that our Public Works staff is working towards that. And I've actually asked the city manager to schedule a meeting with Q3, and we haven't got a chance to follow up on that. And clearly, that's something we're gonna, we're gonna do. And this is the first time that I've seen this. So I'm just gonna repeat that, and appreciate you bringing it to our attention. It's clearly, I can't imagine yours is the only, only house that gets affected by this. So, either way, we still want to help anyone we can in that regard. So, so I think it's something we follow up on. Appreciate the mayor taking his sentiments.
Councilmember Schaefer.
And I agree with both of you on, on the actual item. But since we're here, and since the family's here, Dan or staff, do you guys have anything to add to, to this, please? Do you have anything to add?
Can we start with Assistant City Manager Schwarm? I think you might want to put some guardrails on the discussion.
Yeah. As to the location of Mr. Miller, that area there on Hygiea is on the watch list with Public Works on their regular. They go around town, and they have specific areas that they pay attention to during every storm, and also make available to the homeowners the sandbags so that they can protect their property as well. Currently, the city is in litigation with Mr. Miller, and that is a separate issue and does not affect the watch, that property in that location under watch list. So that is on our storm schedule, mended by Public Works.
Okay. And then staff? And then staff? Any...
Don't think that we have too much more to add to that, if there are any Councilmembers...
No, there's no direct questions. There's any way that we can... Obviously, since they're here again, talking about it to make sure that we put that on a high priority, to make sure that one of the pumps, or if they have to rent a pump at the high level, if there's anything that we as a city, since we're responsible, can do to help mitigate the cost or, you know...
Yeah. And one of the reasons for 8G is it gets us further along, where we'll actually free up two pumps, right? Once we get 8G implemented for probably about $5 million, maybe a little more, depending on cost of construction, then we free up the two pumps at Orpheus and at Union along Vulcan. So... But that said, do you... Oh, you wanted... Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just really quick, and I will send an email to council tomorrow, but we always have our storm prep. So what we have is we have... All of the pumps will be ready and out. We will also have Public Works crews working. The largest amount of rain is going to come in Friday afternoon, evening through Saturday, so we will have crews out. We will also have our VACON trucks that are operated by wastewater out to collect the water. Sandbags are available at Public Works. We put that information also on the website. So we will have crews ready to go and to assist residents and to clear the water and to activate the pumps as well. So I just wanted to let you folks know.
Okay.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? We have a motion and a second. We'll call the question.
That motion does carry unanimously. That takes us to Item 8I. And we have a number of public that are speaking on this item. First one, that was Molly... Where's Molly? Molly Hentleyan? Did you want to... Did you want to stop? So we'll go ahead and do a staff report. My name is Patty Anders. I'm the Planning Manager, and I'll be presenting on Item 8I. Oh, and with me is Dr. Crystal Pugh, our Homeless Programs Coordinator and Director Scott So I'll start with a little bit of a background. On June 18th of this year, the council approved a budget resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025/2026 operating budget, which included $224,000 to support the Homeless Action Plan, or the HAP, specifically to provide outreach and case management services to unhoused individuals in the city. The budget originally proposed $144,000 to be paid from the general fund and $80,000 from restricted funds generated by the state opioid settlements. The city staff released an RFP in July of this year to solicit bids for street outreach and housing navigation and compliance with settlement criteria. In September of this year, the San Diego Rescue Mission selected... Was selected as a service provider. So the opioid settlement funds have strict eligibility criteria, whereas services must be tied to opioid prevention, treatment, and recovery-focused initiatives. The city has received just under $218,000 of settlement funds that can be used to pay the majority of the San Diego Rescue Mission's outreach and case management services. Based on the settlement agreements, the city anticipates receiving approximately $1.3 million in settlement funds over 13 years to support opioid-related treatment, prevention, outreach, and other services. The city council's strategic work plan supports the San Diego Rescue Mission contract. As shown on this slide, work plan goals 1.4 and 1.5, along with objectives B and C, emphasize balancing enforcement with supportive services for the unhoused and securing additional outreach and case management services, resources, and expanding access to supportive and permanent housing, as well as enhancing the Homeless Action Plan to better address evolving community needs. In addition, the contract implements Housing Element Policy 1.7 and Programs 2B, 2C, and 2F, which requires the city to coordinate with social service providers to meet the housing needs of homeless and special needs populations, pursue funding from all levels of government and nonprofits, facilitate affordable housing for all income levels, continue rental assistance efforts, and support targeted homeless prevention programs and outreach in collaboration with regional partners. So I want to take a moment and highlight how the council's budget allocation not only aligns with the city council work plan, but also provides a new critical service and expands previous services provided to the unhoused in Encinitas. The $224,000 will fund two full-time outreach workers dedicated to proactive engagement and support to unhoused individuals Monday through Friday. This is more dedicated outreach services than the city has ever had. In addition, the funding also has... Allows the city to provide, for the very first time, one full-time dedicated housing This is a critical service to help unsheltered residents move forward towards stable housing. It also results in community partnerships by collaboration with San Diego Rescue Mission to enhance service coordination and leverages proven expertise in outreach and housing solutions. This work effort also allows focused local impact, whereas the outreach workers will be embedded in the community on a regular basis, building trust and connecting individuals to essential services. Long-term outcomes will also be a good result of this work effort. By providing additional homeless services, we can lay the groundwork for sustainable housing solution and reduce the cycle of homelessness in the city. This slide shows the... Provides an overview of the proposal and the scope of work, which includes two tasks. Task one includes two full-time outreach specialists with the goal of serving a minimum of 80 unhoused individuals in one year. Task two includes one full-time housing navigator, which is the new service I referenced, and this task includes a goal of housing a minimum of 10 individuals in one year. This slide shows the cost breakdown for each task. Task one is just under $218,000 and is mostly entirely covered by the opioid funds and requires just under $7,000 of general fund. Task two is approximately $120,000, covered by the general fund, and the total cost for this work effort is just under $344,000. So this concludes staff's presentation, and staff recommends the city council approve the professional service agreement and the resolution amending the fiscal year 2025/2026 budget. Staff is available to answer any questions, and the applicant is here and would like to make a short presentation if the council so desires.
Okay. Any preliminary questions? If not, we'll hear from the public that pulled it.
Okay.
How many public do we have?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Wow.
And with a time donation on one of them. So the first three speakers, Molly Hentleyan, Bob Kent, Teresa Beauchamp.
Good evening, council. Molly Hentleyan, District 2. I'm in support of this motion or recommendation with some caveats and questions that I wasn't getting from the report. So I recollect, and maybe you'll deliberate on it, I thought we approved for two full-time employees as part of our HAP. And when I looked at the organizational chart, it was for three. So I was questioning why three, when our budget was for two. And in reading some of the report, I didn't read all 108 pages. I did the Cliff Notes version. I just think we should receive quarterly reports. I think it's an important task if the San Diego Rescue Mission is going to provide the services that we get feedback on the people that they're helping and serving, not their names, but just that we're accomplishing something and achieving the desired outcome of helping individuals to get back on track. So I guess that's my two questions as to why it was three full-time employees in the diagram, and I thought we only had two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, city council members. My name is Bob Kent, Encinitas resident. First, thank you to the staff for preparing this report and all the work that goes into putting this together, because there's a lot there. I'm here to respectfully request that you approve this agreement with the Rescue Mission to provide homeless outreach response and housing navigation services. These efforts are integral to the implementation of our Homeless Action Plan by helping people who are experiencing homelessness meet their basic needs, connect to individual services, and find safe and stable housing. The program includes some key important components that have demonstrated success in other places. First, it restores our housing navigation services, which is an essential tool to finding safe and stable housing. Sometimes people need help in navigating, which is unfortunately a fragmented system. It establishes a by-name list, a comprehensive list, of every person in our community experiencing homelessness, updated in real time in regional collaboration. And thank you for including this item in our strategic plan as a city. Using a by-name list doesn't guarantee success, but it's a lot harder to make progress without it. It includes flex funding, which is key, since service providers are often constrained by very rigid funding requirements. Having some flexibility to meet the parameters of a program is pretty important, I think. And I hope there is sufficient flex funding for the housing navigation efforts. Flex funding here can help fill the gap to cover moving costs like application fees, security deposits, and other items, which can be the difference literally between finding and not finding homes. And lastly, it includes outcome-based evaluation to assess performance and guide future planning. So I think this is a good plan to move forward. So I respectfully request that you do move forward with this plan, and thank you for your commitment to ensure humane and effective solutions for people experiencing homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Teresa Beauchamp, followed by Elena Thompson, with time donation from Ron Medek, who is present, followed by Chris... Is it Ghost Pole?
Good evening, Mayor Ayers, Deputy Mayor Lines, council members, and our wonderful staff. It is a relief to see that you, our City Manager and city staff who have worked so hard, have accomplished a top priority of the 2025/2026 strategic plan by approving funding for essential homelessness support services. I have provided public comment in the past stating that the cities in California that have reached functional zero status, homeless status, all relied on both a social worker doing outreach on the streets and another navigating through the challenges of finding permanent shelter. I am looking forward to Encinitas getting closer to functional zero status. I know 28 public written comments of our Encinitas residents support this. Thank you for understanding that all Encinitans share responsibility to care for our most vulnerable neighbors. Thank you for your service.
Page one. The page... Cover sheet, please. Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Elena Thompson. And welcome, Dr. Pugh, to Encinitas. I know you're a new hire, and it's good to have you here. So the city of Encinitas has a homeless quagmire, and it's not of our own making. And what is a quagmire? A precarious situation or a predicament? We definitely have a quagmire. All of California does, in fact. But I am in support of this initiative, just so you know. And I think... I don't know who couldn't be. Housing and rehabilitation navigation services are critical to get these people off of our street. And... But what I think is missing here is part of this is really a robust community conversation about our overall long-term vision and our overall long-term budget relative to this situation. Next page, please. Deterrence, and like a previous speaker said, or Patty in her presentation, enforcement is also key. We have to deter people from coming to Encinitas to loiter and be on our streets. And enforcement is a big help there. We have seen an uptick, as another speaker mentioned, in the number of homeless people on our streets. Today, between Lucadia and Kaiz, I must have seen eight homeless people on the 101, just in the course of my day. I'm grateful for the sheriff's regular reports or semi-regular reports, as well as the fire department's reports. And I'm grateful for the increase in enforcement, as well as some of the municipal code changes that Councilman O'Hara brought forward. So I think all that's quite positive. Next, please. The facts are, though, that this is a huge spending problem, not only for our state, but for our city. And there's an unknown endpoint to what this spending problem might look like. Our state, our federal government, we're in a deficit. And our city has drainage to fix, roads to fix, parks to build. So I think that this council is really going to want to look closely at how involved we can be, because just before we know it, they'll be coming back asking for more money. So I really do hope that the program is successful and that we can get people off the streets and into the rehab they need, into the housing they need, into whatever programs they need, and maybe even back to their own cities. Because what we have seen is that a lot of these people are not from Encinitas. Like the Safe Parking Lot, the statistics show that only 5% of the people who are using our Safe Parking Lot are from Encinitas. So, you know, how can we be paying for all these services for people not from here? And can we really afford it? Next page, please. So why this matters is that our downtown, our businesses and residents, our public safety, our local quality of life, and our tax revenues are dependent on a functioning city where people can go out and spend money, pay their property taxes, and enjoy where they're living. And again, the opioid dollars are helpful. We're going to be borrowing from money we don't yet have but has been committed to us. Caution there. But is this the best use of the opioid money? We have to look at the trade-offs. So that's where, again, caution in terms of getting in too deep and really knowing what we're spending. And I didn't see that in the staff report, the 2024 overall numbers or the 2025 year-to-date numbers, the total numbers that we're spending and the forecast for spending. So I would encourage us to be looking at that more often with those quarterly reports. And you can see in the chart up there, if you can see, that there are just so many line items on spending for homelessness. So that's it. Thank you. Good luck. Let's make it happen, and let's help these people get off our streets. Thank you.
Following Chris, will be Michelle Jaffee, and then Paul Armstrong.
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm Pastor Chris Goswood from Venture Church, joining you guys again there. Today, I'm speaking in support of the San Diego Rescue Mission. They've been one of our privileged partners for going after the homelessness that's been plaguing San Diego County and beyond there. So with that, I'm not going to belabor our point too much, but their solution, going all the way from intake to care, to taking care of their physical, emotional, mental, spiritual needs, all the way through addressing their addictions, all the way to housing them and following up with them and staying with them through the time that they need, is second to none. I've looked at these programs across the nation, and Venture Church stands ready to pair with them there. We already pair with them financially and with boots on the ground at all their locations. So we stand ready to do the same in Encinitas. Thank you.
Good evening. Very briefly, I am Michelle Jaffee. And yes, the cities that are alleviating homelessness are doing it with a combination of nonprofits and the city government. And as a plan, you saw, there is that money there. And I think it's going to be effective, and I think it's going to be cost-effective that we're not utilizing just our sheriff's department, but we're bringing in San Diego Rescue Mission. So thank you for voting to approve. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Paul Armstrong. I'm the Chief of Staff of the San Diego Rescue Mission, so super excited for the opportunity to be able to partner with you guys. I do have a presentation, but I know I only got three minutes, and I can talk for a really long time. But look at that. I'm going to go quick, I promise. Just real quick, who we are. We do this. we're not utilizing just our sheriff's department, but we're bringing in San Diego Rescue Mission. So thank you for voting to approve.
Good evening. I'm Paul Armstrong. I'm the Chief of Staff of the San Diego Rescue Mission, so super excited for the opportunity to be able to partner with you guys. I do have a presentation, but I know I only got three minutes, and I can talk for a really long time. But look at that. I'm going to go quick, I promise. Just real quick, who we are. We do this. We do this work. It starts with strategic outreach. We also operate low-barrier shelters to be able to get people off the street immediately. We do offer a year-long holistic program that really comes along and helps someone address the issues of their heart. And then we offer after-care in our alumni program. So we really do, from the beginning of meeting them on the street, all the way to following up with them with continuing outreach and with continuing surveys to make sure they stay housed and are thriving. That's our goal, and that's our intention. I'm going to jump through our accomplishments real quick and our background. I just want to highlight our team. Both our Director for our outreach, all of our outreach, and our North County Director, both have lived experience of homelessness. Just want to highlight that, that we really do value those who have experienced homelessness, helping us make sure that the programs we do are effective and meet people where they're actually at. We're going to do something magical. We have a magic wand. No, we don't. Hey, this is about relationship. And I'm going to tell you, real bottom line, what we're going to do is we are going to connect with people daily to build a relationship, to help them be able to figure out that path forward. Sir, whoever came up talking about the by-name list, the value of flex funding, you may have seen a tear coming down my eye. Absolutely, that's what we do see. We do know the value of flexible funding, and we have been a champion for the by-name list. We don't just want it to be a number. So your last point in time count was 53. We want to know who those 53 are. We want to get to understand them so that we can tailor how we're going to come alongside them accordingly. Super grateful that we do have funding that comes from the opioid settlement, and we're going to be mindful that we honor those commitments and that we're able to do that. I really want to jump to, because what you guys, I heard reporting. Again, that was the second tear that came down my eye. We love reporting. What you're seeing up here on your screen is actually our monthly report to the city of Vista, where we also provide outreach. We're going to give you a by-name list. We're going to tell you who came in and who left. We're going to provide you a heat map, so you can actually be able to see where are the people, where are they at, where are we engaging them, and then we're going to give you additional details. But I just want you to be able to see what we are going to do. And we get it. What are the barriers that are holding them? We track that every month. And for our chronic, those who would be classified as chronically homeless or high utilizers of service, we're focusing on them so we can help them get off there. And look at that, with two seconds ago, we're super excited. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I really like a contractor that runs on time, so that's good.
And that does conclude public speakers. And then we have one individual, Natalie Satun, who's registering opposition, but did not wish to speak.
Okay. I wanted to start and let the city manager have a chance to talk about the two versus three positions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So in fiscal year 2425, we did have two, it was called a homeless solutions coordinator. We had two folks that did that. Now, we have a housing services manager, but that was a planner. And so as a planner who did work, and also then led the housing services division as well. So we already had that. That was in a new position. So when I became city manager and talking to development services, and we had some new staff there, we felt that probably the best way to address some of our homeless and unhoused issues was through contract services. So what we did is we took one of the homeless solutions coordinators, and we did reclassify that to our homeless program coordinator, which is Dr. Crystal Pugh, and that's the staff member that will help to oversee all of the contracts, to work on getting grants, to work with the by-name list, to work with the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, to work with our partners over in Vista with the BCNC. So this way, it's more coordination administration. Then the other position that we did, we actually reclassified the homeless solutions coordinator to a new deputy fire marshal, as our fire chief needed some more help in that aspect. So currently, what we have now is we have our housing services manager, which we're hoping to fill that soon, that's still open. And we have Crystal as our homeless program coordinator. And then now, what we look to bring onboard with council approval would be contract services for the outreach, the case management, and, very excited, but the housing navigation. So we'll have the staff that will go ahead and then oversee that.
And then, from an overall budgetary standpoint, this is a net wash, right? As far as headcount and total budget dollars?
Yes, so we did. We did not add any FTEs last year.
So with that, I will recognize Councilmember O'Hara.
Well, I was going to start off by answering a few questions, and I think we just answered several of them that I would call this, we're getting a three for the price of two, in reestablishing, to Mr. Kent's comments, reestablishing our housing navigation plan and using the by-name list, all things that I think are something we've dedicated ourselves to kind of following through on up here, right from the start of our strategic plan, and I'm glad to see this come through. When I heard we were adding somebody on, adding on a new service, it was like, oh, this is going to be a lot of questions. And then I heard it was SD Rescue Mission. And I think SD Rescue Mission goes above what we've had in the past. And the biggest thing they do that we haven't had, and I think this goes a crossway, and people spoke to it, the $24 billion comment, all the different comments we've had out here over the years, is the accountability aspect. And I think by far above all, that is what, not only the service that they provide, but the follow-up and their dedication to making sure there is follow-up to their mission and to supporting their clients, is something that differentiates them. And I think as a partner, that's really something we've said we've wanted all along, and I'm really glad to see this option in front of us. I also think, knowing the Rescue Mission, SD Rescue Mission, as well as I've researched it, they have the ability to offer other types of services as well, that flexibility, which is a great asset for the city to have as a sounding board, as a resource center, as whatever needs the council as a whole decides will serve the city best. I believe they have the ability to help us in future conversations with other nonprofits we work with, who in the past have not provided us with the level of accountability that I would personally like to see. And I think at this point now, we'll have a baseline for them to all reach up to that, I think is a pretty good, solid high bar. So I'm going to make a motion to approve this, and I hope the rest of the council follows me on this. I'm excited to see this get moving through. I think it will help our unhoused population, and I think by doing so, will help protect the quality of life that we all enjoy in Encinitas at the same time. So.
Deputy Mayor Lines.
Yes, I'll just add one note to what's been shared by staff here, and that is something very important, and it goes to some of the public comment. And that is that there's been a sense that we've got more folks that are experiencing homelessness on our streets lately. And that I want to point to, that we have not had people in these positions since the beginning of the year. It was either January or February. We had two staff members in these positions for outreach and for navigation up until about that time. And they left the employment of the city, and now we're able to replace and augment with this solution. So I just want to reinforce that this is the direction we agreed to go, and this is the direction we want to go. And we have had a gap, which I think is unfortunate, but now we're going to get back on track. And so I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'll go next. Well, I had one question. That is about the, I know when we went to two people, it was to provide weekend and after-hour coverage, I thought. I know we never really effectively, we had one, then we added the second. Momentarily, we had the second, then she left, and we were left with one for the majority of the time. So I know we never really had that. But wasn't the intent back then to have weekend coverage for the HOPE team and second shift coverage for the HOPE team?
Yes, that was correct. But we found out that the services that the outreach workers or our employees would have offered them, the people, the organizations weren't open on the weekends. So they couldn't really provide them and get them to the services that they needed.
Okay. But how do we go out and meet the, because these are the caseworkers, right? They're the ones going, talking to the people, and when they're there, you have to go find the client, if you will. They're somewhere in the city, they're not going to be there tomorrow. And so if they're there on the weekend, don't we want somebody that's capable of going out on a weekend and with a HOPE team, and at least making first contact and figuring out, you know, start that relationship, which is all about. So the reason I'm concerned is, the only thing, my only comment in this whole thing, I'm supportive of it, is that the hours of operation, if you will, for the two people that act as caseworkers was the same, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. And I would have looked for the same kind of what the original agreement was for the two people, two employees, was more of a spread so that we could cover and make contact, first contact, second contact, whatever, any time of the night or week.
Yeah, we thought that, too, and we tried that, and it didn't work, because all the places that the unhoused individuals need support, like DMV or Social Security or BCNC, for example, they don't take intakes on the weekend. So it really isn't an effective use of city resources to do that. We need to support them when the offices and the departments that they need the resources from are open.
Okay.
So it just doesn't.
So take me through when, typical scenario, just to kind of understand, a citizen sees somebody in distress, whether they're laid out or whatever, obviously homeless, they should go to the My Encinitas app, report that. It gets routed to, let's say it's after-hours or a weekend, let's say it's a weekend. It goes to the sheriffs?
Yes, they are on that distribution list.
Yeah. So does the, does a HOPE team then go approach them, minus a social worker? Is that what happens?
I would defer to the sheriff. I don't want to speak for them on the weekends. But during the week, the two new caseworkers, they would be handling all of those My Encinitas, and Crystal also gets copied on those.
Okay.
But I would defer to our sheriff in terms of what happens on the weekends.
Yeah, I perceive we're going to have a coverage gap, but it's a minor thing compared to this contract. We can go back and, as we see it operational. So I'll step back up a level again. With San Diego Rescue Mission, I had a chance to tour the facility there, North County Lighthouse. I've met with Donnie D. a couple times at least. I'm impressed. I mean, they seem to be head and shoulders above many of the other private organizations out there. I think they will. And the data reporting, I love the, Paul, I thank you for showing the screen from Vista. They're essentially hiring you for the same, even though more, they have more service. I really appreciate that, and I'm going to be looking into that very closely and monitoring there. And then ultimately, what we're all looking for is to see our point in time count drop, hopefully, at least stay flat. And so to the degree we can get people services and get them off the street, the better. And the last comment I will close with is, we talked about a balanced approach with enforcement. And one of the things we did earlier this year, we had the Homeless Action Plan in front of the council. It originally had three goals, and none of them were enforcement. They were all about the services. And this council added a fourth enforcement goal. Now, that is out being updated. It will come back to council to be adopted, where we will have a balanced approach with enforcement and providing the services, the necessary services. So I don't know if city manager wants to give an update on the timing of that, or if you know.
No, I appreciate. We were, we did hire Dr. Pugh in September, so I will look to our Development Services Director, Scott Drapkin, to let us know when we should accept our first HAP update. Because to Deputy Mayor Line's point, we did, you know, we basically lost both of our homeless solutions coordinators, and then backfilling and things like that. So I would look to Scott for an update on when we should see that.
Yeah, like you mentioned, city manager, we are looking to Crystal to do a lot of the good work. She's just started, she's putting together a lot of things together right now that is definitely on her list to do. It's probably, I mean, I'm going to go out on a limb here, and Patty can kick me if I'm wrong, but we're going to be working on that effort in the next six months, so.
Okay.
She's going to tell me I'm right or wrong right now.
So she's already been working on a draft, but we just are ensuring that we're addressing everything that we heard from the council.
Okay.
Spoiler alert, she's a little bit ahead of the game.
Okay, good. Yeah, like every new job I've ever gotten, I started two months behind. So you should have started two months earlier. With that, we'll move on to Councilmember Schaefer.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll just, a quick overview, is that I've met with San Diego Rescue Mission with Councilmember O'Hara. We spent a whole day with them and Donnie D. They do it right. They've been around for 55 years. They don't accept government grants, government funding, because they don't want the requirements of the government. They say that we don't have a homeless problem, we have a heart problem. And they drive to the fact, again, what Paul brought up, is they drive, they pull up alongside the person, and they bring them through the process. So like we mentioned during our conversations about the HAP, is that they require soberness, they require the person to hold themselves accountable, which then again helps to find self-dignity, self-pride, that helps to grow them through the process. So I couldn't be more excited to have the San Diego Rescue Mission be a part of this. I think with the two new positions, with Dr. Pugh onboard, it's pretty much like everything else we've done. We've taken a step back, we've taken an overview. It's a slow-down-to-speed-up model, and that's where we are right now. We're just around the corner from the speed-up side of it. So I'm excited for where things are going, and happy to have you guys aboard.
Okay, and Councilmember San Antonio.
I'm definitely excited for this as well. I think previously, maybe we heard some residents saying, oh, you know, we just want the homeless out of here. But I think as a council, I feel like that's not really what we want. Not that we don't want them out of here, but we want to help them, is really what it comes down to. It's not, we just don't want them out of here as a blanket statement. It's that we want to help them, and we want to get them back on their feet, and we want to, you know, of course, do we want homelessness in our town? No. But is there, can we do it humanely? Can we do it in a way that we can help? And I believe the San Diego Rescue Mission can do that. Also, in our staff briefing, I think we talked about metrics, and that they had a pretty robust metric that some other organizations didn't even want to apply, right? So I look forward to those metrics. I think Molly brought it up, that a regular report would be great, something that we can look at and, you know, sink our teeth into, because that's really what we want also, is so that we can figure out the best way to serve the city, the best way to serve the unhoused. It's because we need those metrics. So I really think that's really important. I'm really glad that that's something that was brought up in our staff briefing, that that is a pretty big part of what you guys do, is to truly keep track of things. That's important to me. Let's see. I just, is this Captain Watts? Just a quick question. So is what San Diego Rescue Mission bringing to the table, will this help what you guys have, help your guys' job as well?
Yeah, I have not met with them personally, but the idea of it is exactly what we've been missing. So this will definitely help us.
And that's exactly what I wanted to hear. I know that when I've talked to you guys on your walkthroughs through the city, on the downtown, not just you, but the other, some of the other sheriffs that stopped by my shop, they've always mentioned, we're missing something. And when I hear it, and that when I hear that this is a space that can be filled, that's great to hear. I'm in full support of this.
Okay, and then Councilmember O'Hara.
I think that was a great idea. And what I mean by that is, I'd like to see, and I didn't see it in the message, is there a way to ask the SD Rescue Mission if those numbers, at what point this could start, because obviously we have to implement the program to have numbers, but at what point we could start, and if we could, every time the sheriff comes back with those numbers, if those numbers could come back? If so, I'd like to add that amendment to my motion, that we ask them to bring those numbers back when the sheriff reports.
Are you asking for the Chief of Staff to come up and respond?
Sure. Please.
I think it'd be good input right now.
I think the public would appreciate it, and I would certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, we are committed to providing you with a monthly report and whatever, and we'll partner definitely with the sheriff, with whatever their reporting is. So we want to give you guys regular reporting. We've also built in some quarterly reviews as well. But our rhythm is monthly, we're going to give you an update on your by-name list, and then there's some other specific data outcomes that need to be demonstrated with respect to the opioid settlement. So yes, if you want numbers, you're seeing my, you're speaking my language.
Thank you very much. So that's my motion. That's the amendment to it, just to make sure that those metrics and that data comes back to us.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and no more speakers.
O'Hara, could you just repeat your amendment? It was to bring back numbers when the sheriff provides their update?
It's to make sure that we publicly report the metrics every time the sheriff reports.
I'll accept that amendment.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. If we can vote.
And that motion carries unanimously.
Okay, great.
That does complete the consent calendar and takes us to the first action item, which is item 10A.
Okay. And item 10A- And item 10A is to provide direction for the South Coast Highway 101 pedestrian crossing at Solana Beach project within the Encinitas city limits. And the city traffic engineer is Bandigan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, members of public, A. Bandigan, City Traffic Engineer, presenting our South Coast Highway 101 pedestrian crossing project, our HSIP Highway Safety Improvement Program, cycle 12, successful grant application. A very quick background, I'm sure all of our council members remember, a few weeks ago we were here in September 24, we submitted an application for this grant to Caltrans. February this year, we received the award notice letter that the application was successful. And in October, we presented three alternatives to the city council associated with this potential crossing at the southern end of City of Encinitas, bordering City of Solana Beach. This is, as you can see, the red dot shows the approximate location of the potential project. Timeline of the project, where the HCP program was released, when we submitted the application, where we are, and then potential future of the program. As if we get blessing and the direction from city council tonight, we will submit the request for authorization to Caltrans to basically officially accept the project, and then we will start with the design process. Hopefully in '26, we'll have a finished, completed design. And then in '27, we can expect completing it and starting construction. As mentioned, this is, the location is right at the border of the two cities. The grant scope, when it was submitted to Caltrans, was installation of high visibility pedestrian crossing at the Harbaugh Seaside Trail and included a refuge, median island, and rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RRFBs. This was reviewed by the Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission earlier this year, and the recommendation from the commission was not to implement any road diets. This is one of the alternatives, as you can see, this is what was originally submitted with the application, that does show a road diet with a refuge island and a Z-shaped crossing. Another alternative was to implement a traffic signal, a pedestrian signal, similar to what we have at Swamis and a few other locations. We have two of those on 101 in Lucadia, two pedestrian crossings with a traffic signal. The difference is for this one, for aesthetic purposes and minimizing aesthetic impact, our concept design did not have a master harmony, just relied on shorter 1A poles. The third alternative was providing a walkway on the east side of the road from the border of the two cities all the way to the seaside beach access, install a full traffic signal there for the T intersection, and then provide this crossing here. This was discussed at the council meeting, the direction was to continue this item to today meeting and meet with City of Solana Beach to discuss potential other alternatives and basically discuss a little bit more with regards to pros and cons of each alternative. We had three meetings with City of Solana Beach, October 27, October 29. There were two Zoom calls, and there was one in-person meeting at the location with both cities' staff. And we discussed different variations, different possibilities. However, due to the limited amount of time that we had from the previous meeting and today, there was no option of fully creating another alternative. City of Solana Beach did not have any idea that could come to any kind of fruition. So we're today, we're here today with the original three alternatives and requesting direction from council on how to proceed with this. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, council. I'm open to questions.
Okay, any questions of clarification?
Yeah, just one. Can I get, Dan, would you mind explaining, this is not a safety requirement for this project, right? This is a set aside. Can you explain what the difference is, please?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. Dan Nutter, City Engineer and Director of Engineering. So when it comes to an HCP grant, there are two designations. The vast majority of HCP grants are authorized or granted based on what they call a benefit cost ratio. So you do an analysis, determine what those safety improvements would be, what the benefit of that would be versus the cost of implementation, the cost of implementing, and tongue twister there. This particular project is what's considered a set aside. So it is actually not granted solely based on a benefit cost ratio. So there is a, a set aside bucket of dollars that either the state or the federal government, whichever funding pot this HCP project or an HCP project would come from, Caltrans has the ability to provide a project, even though a benefit cost ratio is not part of the equation. This HCP grant is a set aside.
Copy. Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. And we have, I hear nine, and we are going to extend a courtesy to our elected officials from Solana Beach by putting them up front.
Correct. So we do have, the first group from Solana Beach is Alyssa Mudo, the city manager, along with Aurelia DeBrau, and then they do have one-time donation from Dion Akers. So they will have nine minutes and they're presenting together. Yeah.
Three of the nine?
Yes.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I want to start by thanking you for the continuance on this item, to allow us a chance to be here and share with you the history and the constraints and the opportunities to work together for the extension of the Coastal Rail Trail and the state's coastal conservancy trail system, the crossing at 101 from the Harbaugh Trails over to the state beach, and your projects moving north of that, that include bike infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure that I think I heard you want to design further. We have all attended this evening, myself, my assistant city manager, who was here at the last meeting, our staff, and all of our council members, our mayor, deputy mayor, and council members, because this is really important, and it really is going to take a lot of collaboration. And that collaboration has started with meetings between the city manager and myself and our staff, and then as well as with each of you. And I really want to also thank you for the time you spent to come out to the field with myself, the mayor, and our staff to, again, go over the same conversation items or discussion items in the field. What we're hoping for tonight, and I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works, is to just allow for that continued collaboration. I know that things have changed here in the city of Encinitas, and we want to work with the staff and with the engineers to do modifications, to make all those projects and all the goals come together. So with that, I'll turn it over to Aurelia DeBrau, our Public Works Director. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Aurelia DeBrau, Public Works Director for the City of Solana Beach. And I'll be presenting a quick overview of the importance of the crossing at Harbaugh Trails, as well as an overview of the, of the City of Solana Beach's Coastal Rail Trail The Coastal Rail Trail is part of a regional network stretching from Oceanside to downtown San Diego. And Solana Beach is designing the missing link between Solana Beach and Encinitas at our northern boundary. We have a goal of creating a seamless connection between the Coastal Rail Trail and the Harbaugh Seaside Trail for our pedestrians and many users within our community. Our project is being designed by repurposing the existing road right-of-way, focusing on safety and mobility improvements that work for both of our communities. We are fortunate enough to receive funding from Senator Blakespear to advance this work, and we continue to work together with the City of Encinitas team on some of the engineering elements and studies as we move forward. Our shared objective is to give pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists a seamless and safe transition between our two cities as we look forward to this collaboration. The Harbaugh Seaside Trails in Santa Lejo Lagoon form a natural public space between our two cities. Our cities have worked collaboratively for several years to evaluate safe, practical options for the crossing with joint contracts for conceptual designs. But we recognize with changes in the City of Encinitas' projects, we'll continue to need to redesign both of our projects. Traffic and pedestrian studies conducted during the summer months in 2022 and 2023 showed that approximately at peak pedestrian travel, there were 150 pedestrians that were crossing, mainly at the trailhead, and that was taken on a Saturday afternoon between 11:00 AM and 1:45 PM. The proposed crossing located within the City of Encinitas will replace existing informal crossings with a protected, signalized crosswalk and create a direct link between trail users and the sidewalk improvements recently completed by both our cities on the west side of Highway 101. The third option as well would provide an alternative path for pedestrians to travel to the signal. So with that, I will turn it over to David.
We'll go ahead and we'll conclude the staff presentation, and we'll let our electeds speak at this point. Deputy Mayor? And so I have... Deputy Mayor, Kristi? Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and council members and staff. My name's Kristi Becker. I'm the Deputy Mayor of Solana Beach. And again, thank you for giving us this additional time and allowing the City of Solana Beach to be part of the discussions. First and foremost, the City of Solana Beach shares your commitment to ensuring safety and security for our residents above all else. Developing a pedestrian crossing that is safe, reliable, and accessible is our top priority. Residents, pedestrians, cyclists, and tourists of all use our roads and our trails to access the beautiful beaches and coasts of our cities, and often cross Highway 101 wherever it's most convenient. Knowing this, we want to continue to collaborate with Encinitas to develop projects that are not only safe, but are also comfortable, obvious, and connected to the existing infrastructure on our border. We also believe that the best, safest projects are ones that provide a seamless and smooth transition from one trail, sidewalk, roadway, or city to another. There are many examples of where our cities have, and our cities have successfully worked together to leverage our resources and complement our infrastructure, and we can do that again here. While we may not be in full agreement today on the exact specifics, our cities can and should continue to work together in the upcoming, upcoming design phases of our projects to achieve these standards. We are willing to take the time to ensure that the inevitable crossing is one that both our city councils and our constituents will be proud of, and they will use this for decades to come. And this is not just a lofty goal. The engineering realities and the regulatory oversight from state agencies will require that we work together on developing a project that gets our people safely to the west side of the 101. Solana Beach's hope is that Encinitas will move forward in accepting the grant, the Caltrans grant, and continue to work alongside us as we develop our individual projects. And I just want to reiterate that we are ready, willing, and able to work with this new city council. Thank you.
And then next, we have Councilmember David Zeta with a time donation from Councilmember Joe McDonald.
Does this go to reach? Oh, this one.
Just hold on to it.
Yeah, it's slow.
Okay, well, hopefully you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Mayor Ilers, Deputy Mayor Lyne's, councilmembers O'Hara and Schaefer, good to see all of you, glad to visit you in your home. Haven't been here in a while. So Councilmember San Antonio, we haven't met yet, but looking forward to having some future conversations. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight and for extending the timeline so staff could collaborate and communicate further. And I would like to thank each of you for individually visiting. It bodes well for the spirit of collaboration. I think that's a really good thing. Thanks for that. To help provide some context on the direction that's been taken by the City of Solana Beach to date, I'd like to share a bit of the background. About 25 years ago, I was part of a group that began working to preserve what is now Harbaugh Seaside Trails as a permanent open space. After 15 years, that effort succeeded. The Nature Collective, named differently at that point, acquired the property with private donor funds, and in collaboration with those donors and our city, placed a conservation easement on the deed and established zoning that prohibits paved surfaces on that property. The area was then restored using a $1 million grant from, well, $1 million in funds from the North Coast Corridor Environmental Mitigation Fund. So that, that was used to fund the restoration. The result is a beautiful natural space that, along with the rail undercrossing and Annie's Canyon Trail, has become a popular destination for walking, hiking, and running. The challenge is that this popularity is led to safety risks. Many pedestrians cross Highway 101 here to reach Cardiff State Beach, and cyclists will e-bike through the park to get to the Encinitas Protected Bike Infrastructure that exists there today. I appreciate that both cities have recognized these issues and are pursuing solutions. I also want to thank Encinitas for the temporary slow down, stay safe sign that's been there, the electronic road sign for the past two months, to help highlight the speeding problem, which is exacerbated by the downhill road at this location, making it dangerous for pedestrians. As you've heard, Solana Beach has developed a plan to extend the rail trail that converts one traffic lane. This avoids rezoning, deed modifications, LUP amendments, and additional environmental mitigation, which could turn a one-year, $400,000 project into a three to four years and multiple millions of dollars. It also respects the intent of the conservation easement and the Nature Collective's opposition to further paving to the east. Initially, our council was skeptical, skeptical about reducing lane, but a third-party study and simulation by STC Traffic demonstrated that traffic volumes here can be handled easily, even with two lanes, causing no backups or queuing with the merging, while also significantly improving pedestrian safety by shorting the crossing distance at this location. Being sort of a data geek and having an engineering background, I have also done other poking. I explored the crash modification factors clearinghouse, which has a lot of studies. It's a very interesting place. Some data that I was able to pull off of there, although I would encourage us to validate it with a real traffic engineer, is a median refuge reduces pedestrian crashes by 32% in a crossing. Reducing four lanes to just three lanes cuts crashes by 36% into pedestrians. And this does not count the reduced severity of injuries from the slower speeds that occur. RRFBs reduce crashes by about 50 to 70%, and Hawk Signal shows similar benefits. This is what I was able to pull off of that site. And then for fun, again, being an engineer, I even ran this information through an AI model for these options, and it showed we get really up to 80% crash reduction even for Alternative A, which is a huge benefit relative to the current state. From my personal experience, I cross here every day on my walk, as well as at the nearest signal at Solana Vista. I do this every day with my dogs. A few observations. Last year, Encinitas reduced this location to one lane southbound for three full months to do sidewalk construction next to the seaside park there. There were no major traffic issues, of which I'm aware. Initially, there were some bicycle issues because there wasn't a bicycle lane that was adequately spat there, but once that was fixed, it seemed to work fine. Most of the early morning and evening crossers are runners. Many who at the Solana Vista signal trigger the walk light, but go ahead and cross when they're able to run, leaving vehicles stopped at the red light for up to 45 seconds with nobody in the crosswalk. A problem solved by an RRFB design, if we were able to use that here. Speeding and aggressive passing are common, creating unpredictable hazards for pedestrians. You know, I'll look at a car that's coming to me, and suddenly the car behind them is going a lot faster, swerves around, passes, and I realize I don't have time to cross at that point because of that. Just wanted to make a comment on Alternative C, noting that this will not solve the issue as many people will continue to cross at this location, as evidenced by those who ignore the rope fence currently present. Also, for this alternative to be a viable option, the Class 1 trail really needs to go down to the crossing because cyclists are looking for a protected facility at this location. Nearby areas like Delmar, Torrey Pines, and North Cardiff already function with one lane each way on 101. I travel this area regularly and observed that RRFBs rarely cause backups, but full signals and stop signs do. In closing, I encourage the council to accept the grant, we need a crossing here, and continue the collaboration between our cities to ensure the rail trail extension and crossing improvements align seamlessly. and crossing improvements align seamlessly. I did watch some of the Santa Fe discussions, and I was encouraged by much of the conversation about safety, about relying on traffic engineering to tell us what the results are. And the mayor, your comment about your general plan objective where safety and community character are prioritized over motor convenience hit me well, too. So with that, of the current options, I would encourage you to progress with some form of Option A, which offers the strongest combination of safety, traffic flow, and cost effectiveness while maintaining respect for the iconic beauty of this location. Once again, thank you for your time.
Next speakers, Ellen Burr, Joyce Shepherd, and then Rahul Deshpande.
Good evening, Council. Two comments. I was really surprised to read a letter from the Californian Department of Parks and Recreation that they had not been contacted regarding this, because the main reason we're building this crosswalk is for people to cross to go to that park. So I think we should always contact whoever is adjacent to a project that we're doing, you know, the 500-yard, 1,000-yard, CPP, whatever. Secondly, and Solana Beach has been here, but I was really surprised to read that there had been two or three meetings, and there was no recommended alternative and no recommended changes, and we're still sticking with number A. But I'm asking you tonight to go with number B. That is where people want to cross. The shortest distance between two points is a straight line, so please stick with B. The other thing is that without the former mayor, and I know we don't really love a lot about what the former mayor did, but he was the one who insisted that there be a undercrossing underneath the tracks, which has now allowed Harbaugh to coexist with the rest of the Santa Lejo Lagoon properties. And I would posit that there is many or more people that are coming through that tunnel to get to the beach than there are using the Harbaugh rail trails, which I remember when it was just all the poles hanging up there. And finally, I would like to ask that instead of just being a ped crossing, that this become a bicycle crossing, just made it go a little wider and put those green lines in there, because if it is approved, what you asked to be approved last time, to have a two-way track on the west side of the highway to accommodate recreational amateur family riders, then that is a perfect way for people from the Harbaugh Trail or anyone else who doesn't want to continue to come across and go to where they really want to go, where it is either felt to be safer on the west side, reverse travel track, or to go straight into the park, which I guess I do have another ask, is that we should be working with the California Parks District to make the Little Goat Trail a ramp for bicycles and ADA access and some modified stairs so that somebody besides really fit hunkies, surfers, can get down there. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, and staff. Councilwoman Schaefer, thank you very much for your service, and to all the other veterans that may be here tonight. I'm Joyce Shepherd, representing Cardiff 101 Main Street. Seaside Reef and Santa Lejo Lagoons are treasures to both Encinitas and all of California, and to walk between them, I and hundreds of other people are playing Frogger, or for anyone under 30, crossy road, to get across the 101. We urge you to accept the state grant for the Highway 101 pedestrian crossing. And we also believe that Alternative C will solve many problems in that area. And maybe a fourth if we use dark sky lighting at the crossing. The cross, yeah. Pedestrians can safely cross Highway 101 if we put this in this crossing here. Cars will be able to safely turn left out of Seaside Reef parking lot, and cyclists will be able to safely access the future two-way protected bike lane that's included in the grant that was accepted on October 22nd, which also includes a widened walking path, both of which will be on the west side of the 101. We urge you to keep the two lanes of traffic in each direction. The 101 is a major artery, and it's especially essential when the five isn't moving. We also recommend sensors for cars and push buttons for pedestrians to avoid unnecessary red lights. So while flashing beacons in pedestrian crosswalks work well in many situations, they also provide a false sense of security. And the speed limit on this portion of the 101 is 30 miles an hour, but cars regularly go 50 and might not be able to stop or notice the flashing to stop for the crosswalk. So congratulations on receiving this grant. Please don't miss this opportunity to use it. Thank you.
And then following Rahul is Jennifer Bright, and then Jim Jaffe with time donation from Michelle Jaffe, who is present.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rahul Deshpande, speaking on behalf of the Cardiff Town Council Committee of Cardiff 101 Main Street. We support Option C, installing a traffic signal at the seaside parking lot. When I moved to Cardiff almost 40 years ago, there were no traffic lights between Chesterfield and Loma Santa Fe. But things have changed. The two new bridges in the Santa Lejo Lagoon, along with the paved and expanded seaside parking lot, and now the many events that occur at the beach near the seaside parking lot, have created two clear safety concerns. Pedestrians crossing 101 and cars making left turns in and out of the seaside lot. A signal at seaside addresses both issues. That's why we support Option C, but with two very important conditions. The signal should be actuated only when a pedestrian is crossing or when a vehicle is making a left turn. We don't want Highway 101 traffic stopped needlessly. Second condition, any lighting associated with the signal should be designed to minimize glare and spill over toward the lagoon, to protect its natural darkness and sensitive wildlife habitat, and to respect our Solana Beach neighbors just to the south. If the city were to choose Option A or B, a signal at seaside would almost certainly be needed later, and that could create a hazardous situation where southbound drivers are now forced to stop again right after the traffic light. We're also concerned about the proposed lane diet that would reduce Highway 101 to one lane in each direction. This would create unsafe merges and restrict traffic flow on an important route in and out of Cardiff, in and out of Encinitas. We believe Option C strikes the right balance between safety, traffic flow, and the coastal character that makes Cardiff special. On behalf of the Cardiff Town Council Committee, thank you for your time and your continued attention to safety and livability along Highway 101. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Jennifer Bright. I am the Executive Director of Nature Collective. As earlier stated, we are the landowners of Harbaugh Seaside Trails, which we were successful in saving and having preserved an open space with the help of many, many residents from Encinitas and Solana Beach. We are here tonight to support a crosswalk in the area that connects Harbaugh Seaside Trails to Cardiff State Beach. We have been always very supportive of that. We think it'll be the last connector to this beautiful Santa Lejo Lagoon to our Cardiff State Beach. We do appreciate that the city took into account the comments we made at the last council meeting and realigned the concept exhibit so that it does not impact the D'Aiken coastal sage scrub and the California gnat catcher habitat that is there. We look forward to being kept in the loop as hopefully this moves forward and to be able to collaborate and provide communication on how this future planning might go.
Sorry, not as tall as my neighbor Dave. Jim Jaffe, I'm the co-lead of the Beach Preservation Committee of the San Diego County Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation. I'm also a frequent user of that presently unregulated crosswalk, either with my surfboard or with Dave and his dogs oftentimes. Something needs to be done there. It's obviously, whether or not it's a set aside that Councilmember Schaefer brought to your attention, there's still a safety issue there. I guess the fence was built there, obviously, to deter people from crossing because it was an unsafe condition. Surf Rider opposed that and asked that a permit be put in place for that fence, as I raised at the previous meeting. That fence needs to be removed, and with the master plan, when Harbaugh Trails was approved, there was supposed to be a future crossing included in that. That was in the letter that I submitted in October. I didn't see that the previous letters were in the record. I don't know if we can incorporate those by reference into this record. Maybe you can add that to your motion or discussion somehow to make sure everything that was previously submitted on this issue is in the record, but a lot of that was included in our previous letter. I did not submit a new letter, and I want to make certain that it's clear that there is supposed to be some kind of crossing there. So you should approve accepting this grant. It would be great if there's some way to collaborate and the coastal rail trail is completed all the way through. There are complications, as was brought up. I'm very familiar with the permit for Harbaugh Trails Park. There are restrictions on it, that it can't be paved, so they are going to have to encroach into the right-of-way one way or another to extend the coastal rail trail throughout Solana Beach. So something has to be done cooperatively with Solana Beach and Encinitas, and something has to be done to get people safely across, especially kids going to surf PE or surf team practice. You know, they ride those e-bikes. As much as people don't like them, that's where we are today, and that's the way the kids are getting to Seaside Reef. You can see the litter of bikes by the lifeguard tower there every morning, you know, and after school when they're practicing as well. So we hope you can come to some kind of consensus to make this an acceptable solution for all the parties involved and finally get a crosswalk in there as soon as possible, because it is not safe regardless of the semantics of the grant. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Okay. With that, we'll go to council deliberation. Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the idea is, just so everybody in our city is aware, that Solana Beach is asking us to accept only Option A because of the extension of the rail trail, correct? Am I correct? Well, okay. Basically, there's no ability to extend the rail trail without having a lane diet on our side or lanectomy due to the fact that they can't, which is what Mr. Jaffe just said, cannot pave inside of the Harbaugh Trails. So, you know, at this point, really, the only two options I'm really kind of, let's go back real quick. Whoever it was that spoke to, was it Dave or, once the, or no, it was Ellen, once the trail came underneath the railroad, that's when an insurgence of people coming through and making their way to the beach from east to west. It's significant. I don't like the crosswalk there for the fact that when people are coming out of Solana Beach, it's that sweeping right-to-left turn. People are usually eyes up, looking at the ocean, looking at what would be a seaport village of Cardiff kind of look. And with their eyes up, looking up, people trying to cross right there, it's, I think it's an increased danger personally. I feel like it creates, and we spoke to this, I spoke to this when we met, I don't like the location of it, especially with most people. Again, some people can get up to 50 at that point and starting to speed up. I think a light at sea or at the seaside parking lot, again, I would prefer not ever have to go in, but we're kind of heading in the direction with more population in both cities, throughout the city of the county of San Diego. So I think Option C would probably be my first one at this point. I would do possibly think about an Option B if, with a directly across with the light. I don't like the RRFBs, the lack of delay due to somebody pressing it and somebody thinking that they have the comfort of walking or the confidence of safety when in reality it's an immediate actuation. So somebody presses it, and immediately it starts flashing, and a lot of people, my personal experience, has been to see people just attempt to walk initially without the delay, like a light that has a yellow light, a slowdown, and a red light, a time delay, two, three seconds, and then a walk. It's just a safe spot, especially with the habit patterns that have been built over the course of the years. People that come from north or from south to north, a lot of times will get off at Villa de la Vie, Loma Santa Fe, and make their way through, because that's the prettiest part of the beach, and make their way up through Carlsbad. So if we're talking safety, I think C is the safest. I know that Harbaugh is right there. I will ask staff, do we have any crash data at this point or data at this point in that location? Is there any crash data that we have currently in that location?
There are no crossing incidences in this location.
Okay, and that's my issue. So we go to El Portal, and we see, hey, we didn't have any crashes before. Now we have 19. Yeah, 12 of them happen to be DUIs, but the fact of the matter is, is we created crashes where crashes didn't exist before. They may have been crashes somewhere else. This is absolutely going to create a crash. I'm not sure when, how, or how many. It might take weeks, months. I think it's going to take years that we're going to continue to see crashes there. So we're sitting here seeing zero crashes there. I know people are Frogger or whatever crossy-crossy is, the new game, but people are Froggering across. They have an option. I don't think many people, again, before the undercrossing at the railroad, I think most people are crossing at the overpass at the rail and coming across at the light in Solana Beach and then making their way down. Some people would cross when they needed to, runners, whatever, but the fact of the matter is, they opted their time when they thought it. We don't have any crash data at this point, so I think this creates crashes personally.
Okay. Next, Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Yes, communication is really important, and I'd like to ask the Public Works Director of Solana Beach to respond to the question Councilmember Schaefer asked about. He asked you, are we limited to just the one lane each direction? Can you respond to that?
Of course. With the many changing scenarios right now with all the projects that are going on, especially with the HSIP grants, we need time to look at the different alternatives for the potential reduction from two lanes to one lane in each direction, and it really depends on the configuration. And some of it is just a taper. And I think as we go through this, because all the pedestrian and traffic studies were done two years ago, so we need to really look at the modern data and the use that's currently happening before we finalize the design. There's lots of, there are several concepts that do go down to the one lane, but that initial one from A was based on the assumption of the projects in the city of Encinitas. So we really are all going back to the drawing board, and we're back to conceptual designs.
I'd be into that, and we have a time limit to get our grants in, but at this point in our conversations, and I appreciate all of City Council coming, we talked about it out there. I said it pretty loud and clear, my personal opinion, and again, I'm 105, but I do not, I know that other cities are doing it. I personally do not like lane diets personally. That's just where I sit. I'm not going to, you're not going to change my mind about it. Nothing's coming that way. So unless you guys have another option, I don't really see it being my favorite vote. So that's where I sit.
Deputy Mayor Lyons has the floor.
Yeah, I'll take it back then. Thanks for that clarification. So, but I was glad to hear that clarification. Thank you. And it was in the direction that I was leaning. I actually don't feel like I have enough information to say which option we should choose here, because this is your classic, the devil's in the details. We don't have a survey yet. I have been told we don't have a survey yet. Dan, if we do, well, help me clarify that. I mean, we're out there pointing in the field. We're going, well, we think the city jurisdiction is right there, but we really don't know. And we don't even know how wide our right-of-way is here. And so we don't have enough information to answer those specific questions. And you're saying, oh, saying, oops, yep, we've got to back up now, and we need to figure out how to respond to the city of Encinitas' needs, and you're hearing them tonight, and then make it work for the city of Solana Beach too. So Dan, maybe you could respond to my question?
Yeah, sure. Madam Deputy Mayor, you are correct. We do not have a survey that would be associated with this project quite yet, because this has, quite frankly, has not yet turned into a project.
Right.
We do have a fairly good idea of where our city right-of-way lies, and that would be GIS data. It's not going to be 100% accurate, but it is accurate enough for us to prepare conceptual designs as we have done. So we've got a fairly good understanding and knowledge, but you're absolutely right, there is not a survey completed quite yet.
Thanks for that clarification. This is tricky. You know, we're coordinating across jurisdictions here. We both need to be on the same database. We both need to make sure the numbers work. I've heard us say that we can fit in the cross-section for all of these without impacting the sensitive environmental land, and I want to see that. I haven't seen it yet because we've got limited space there. At the last meeting, I said about another project, not this one, are we going to impact the dunes? And this is, again, another project, and I was told no, but I need to see those numbers. Otherwise, I don't feel confident yet that, and I know we'll get them and we'll evolve in our decision-making, but when it comes to this jurisdictional line with objectives that both of our communities want to meet, it is going to take a little more time. I appreciate the city of Solana Beach's efforts to meet with us over the last two or so weeks. It was kind of like a crash course. Okay, what do you want? Okay, what do you want? You know? I wish we could have done that at a staff level more effectively before it came to City Council, and I'm not absolutely sure why that didn't happen, but it didn't, and so here we are. One thing I did learn, or a couple of things I did learn from my meeting with the city of Solana Beach, Councilmember Schaefer was there with me, we met two at a time with the city, is that we are all committed to a safe crossing. So, good. We all are committed to a safe crossing. We all admit we need a safe pedestrian and bicycle crossing here. We have people coming northbound from Solana Beach and people going southbound from Encinitas Boulevard, and we have the same objectives in mind, that we need to get them across safely. One of my main objectives that I'm going to voice right now is that I don't want a lot of light spill. I don't see an option here that provides me, that solves the problem of us not doing a diet, which is what I'm hearing my council colleagues tell me, but I'm also hearing that from the community. So I don't see that here in Encinitas, we have a lot of traction and support behind a lane diet. But I don't see an option that protects the light pollution created by the proposed signals, whether it's the Swami-like pedestrian signal or a traffic signal, and if we can demonstrate that we could put in a safe signal without a lot of the light spill and the light glare that people are worried about, then I could say I would get behind that. I like, I was compelled by the idea, let me make, I don't want to jump around too much. I also am really concerned with environmental impacts, so I think it's a non-starter. I think I've heard other people say that. We need to know exactly where our boundary is and where we need to stay out of, and then all the other solutions need to fall out of that. And if we can't do a safe solution for pedestrian and bike crossing that doesn't pollute the environment with overflow and overspill of light without environmental impacts, then we've got a problem, and we can problem-solve that too. But I don't see a solution here that addresses all of our concerns. But I do see commitment from both cities, and I want to honor that, and I want to move forward. If that means we choose an option today, I'm fine with that. I can get behind an option here with the caveats that we still need to do these things, and we might not, and we might, and we need more information before we can know which of these things to do, or which of these things would result in the best outcome. There's a lot of creative ideas. When I was out there, and Councilmember Schaefer suggested, you know, in order to make it more safe, maybe we have some signage or something 50 feet down the road that says, a pedestrian bicycle crossing ahead, you know, or things that help alert the public. So I'm just throwing that out there as, I think we have problems that have solutions if we put our heads together, and I'm anxious to do that. Today, I met with the Cardiff Town Council, and they were very adamant about option C. And I am concerned that we can't do option C without environmental impacts. So until I see that we can solve that problem, I'm a little hesitant for option C, but I do want to honor their request and as they spoke tonight. That option C looks like it could be a safer crossing because that's where cars take, do their maneuvering too. So the more everyone's making their decision about crossing, whether it's a car or a pedestrian in the same place, then you don't have fragmented crossings all along the roadway that people don't expect. So I think there's really merit to option C if it doesn't have the light polluted pollution and if it's, if there aren't environmental impacts. So that was mostly where I stand, and I'm willing to accept moving forward with something, and as long as we understand, we still have a lot of decisions to be made.
Okay, I'll hop in here. Do we have an aerial view of the, with the right-of-way, with the property lines on it? Or just an aerial view? I think we can, I can talk to it. My first question is, from what I understand, there's a pretty healthy right-of-way owned by the city of Solana Beach on their side and owned by the city of Encinitas on our side, and apparently there's an issue that, at least the portion on the Solana Beach side, has a environmental conservatorship easement over the top. And so my question is first, does the Encinitas side have that same easement? In other words, the right-of-way that is to the left up here of the crosswalk, that is in essence all in Encinitas, up to the edge, yeah, I see the black line there on the, so that to the, well, the enclosed black line from where the city of Encinitas, I don't know if anybody can put a mouse on there and go along, and now go all the way to the corner and cut back? Okay. So what we're saying is, to the right of that, they have a conservation easement. Did we also record a conservation easement on our right-of-way?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I cannot answer that. I can get back to you. Now, we haven't looked into it because we don't have any options that we are proposing impacting.
Understood. I don't know whether Jennifer from, can you answer it, whether, you'd have to come up to the microphone for me.
And I have looked into the conservation easement that is on the Harbaugh Trail parcel. I do not know that that particular conservation easement is only on that parcel, but.
I'm just trying to figure out what our property, what our options are. So do you, do you know, or do you remember, were you involved when the easement was put on there?
Yeah.
Did the city of Encinitas adopt the easement?
I can't say for 100% sure there. What I did look at, what we did look at before we came last time is the easement does go in, and there was mitigation work that was done beyond that curb, and last time we were opposing C because it was potentially going to impact that area.
I'm going there next. Stay right there. I'm going there next. So now, when you go down further and you get beyond where it cuts back and we're down in the actual slough portion, there's very little non-conservation easement there. We can't expand down the slope, so to speak.
Oh, it is a steep slope.
Right, yeah. But we can't, we can't encroach into that. Okay. That was my question. Thank you. So now I step back and I go, okay, 50-year view. Where are we going? Where is this rail trail starting and ending? And the whole idea is connected, the entire length. I think we just established that it ain't going to go on the east side of 101 unless we get rid of a lane, a whole lane, that whole way. That's the only way there will be room to put a rail trail continuously on the east side entirely through Solana Beach, and then connect up to the Cardiff Rail Trail, and then take it the rest of the way. So I'm opposed to the lane diet all the way through there that would be necessary in order to put the rail trail on that side. So therefore, you have to switch sides, which I think we talked about when I met with Solana Beach people out there today. We agreed that it would cut over, hence the crossing. Now the question becomes, where does it cross over? Why does it have to cross over at the, I would call it the northwesternmost corner of Harbaugh? Why shouldn't it cross over at the southwesternmost corner and continue? Because we don't have a full rail trail continuing from there. We have a bike path on 101. We do not have plans for bringing the entire protected bike lane, dual-direction bike lane all the way up there, but we do have a sidewalk all the way down there we put in. And so to me, the question is, where does Solana Beach terminate the rail trail? And with that, and we talked about it today, you could move it up to Solana Vista, I think, Dave, is the next, where the, what, the one office building, the one unique office building there. Isn't that Solana Vista? Is that the, and that's where I would put the corner. That's where all the entry monuments for the, it's which one is it?
Ocean.
Is it Oceana? Okay, I'm sorry. I meant Oceana.
It's Ocean Street, Mr. Mayor.
Did somebody call out to me?
Mr. Mayor, that is Ocean Street. Roberto's is Solana Vista Drive. That's where the signal is.
Okay, then I meant, you know, we could cut over at the beginning, or it could, Solana Beach has the option, one alternative. We're trying to talk about alternatives, and so switching over to the other side there. Now, the question is long-term, what do we do on our side? We probably can support, we certainly can support a bike lane on the east side, and a bike lane on the west side, and a sidewalk on the west side. That's in our current plans. But ultimately, I agree with Cardiff Town Council. I believe sometime in the future, we will need a signalized intersection at that, at the parking lot, and absolutely mandatory. And that's where all the ADA access to the beach is. We put it down there when we designed it. I was on planning commission when we approved it. So my question, I do not support going to two lanes. Three lanes, maybe? I think, I may steal a little of Jim's thunder here. You talked to me about, what I don't want to have is traffic backing up into Encinitas because I ran on a platform of no lane diets, and lanectomies, as I call them, and this, the solution path we're going down right now almost mandates we are going to have to continue the Coastal Rail Trail on the easternmost lane and take it out all the way through Cardiff, and I don't agree with that at all. Few other comments. Somebody mentioned bikes crossing. Bikes aren't allowed on the trails in the nature conservancy, so they better not be in Harbaugh either. They're not, they're not coming, bicycles should not be coming underneath the railroad tracks. They're not allowed on the trails on that side, so I don't know why they would get over there. Bicycles are coming down the bike paths where they should be, and that's fine. They're going, you know, and they need a crossing, but they don't need a crossing necessarily tied to that corner of this property, of the Harbaugh property. And that's what seems to be the anchor that keeps coming back to. Why does it have to be there? Because people are coming out under the, literally, under the railroad, and they come across there. And there are people doing that, but the question is, there's two groups of people, those headed south and those headed north. The ones that are going north, we want them to go down and use the full crosswalk at the entrance to the parking because that's the proper way to get there, not the goat trail. We actually don't want people using the goat trail. People headed south into Solana Beach, move, if you, if Solana Beach, and this is completely your choice, move, shorten the rail trail, stop it at the edge of, at the beginning of Harbaugh, and put a crossing there, and then you have a very easy way to walk if you're headed south or north. Very few people are going straight across that can't go down to the bottom to go to the beach. So I'm still in support of C, as I was. I'm looking 50 years out every time, every decision I make up here, I go, what are we going to need there? We are going to need a crossing, probably two crossings, and I do believe, as somebody else pointed out, that where this is proposed is pretty close, it's 600 feet roughly, to the, to the parking lot crossing, and it's about, I'm going to say 1,400 feet back all the way to Solana Vista, but a lot less than that to Ocean or Oceana, whatever it was. So I think proper spacing, and then last but not least, let's talk lights and traffic lights. I firmly believe that for a highway like this, you need a traffic light. It needs to be unambiguous that a car needs to come to a stop on demand for the driver to stop, and the concept that I'm going to walk halfway out into Highway 101 and let the traffic on the opposite side while I'm on the east side, let the traffic continue flowing till I get to the middle, and then hope the light's still flashing or hit the second light and get them to stop. I just don't see it happening. I've seen too many close calls at RRFBs. And so the other, and then the last item, is the streetlights that would be required, and if staff could address, would we, for an RRFB, require a streetlight at a crossing in that position, and would we require a streetlight, or two streetlights, I should say one on each side, a streetlight, a full streetlight down at the parking lot too, if we went that route?
So no matter where we would have a pedestrian crossing roadway in this location, we would need to have streetlights. That would be for the safety of our pedestrians, so that way the crossing is illuminated, especially in nighttime conditions. So whether the crossing would be near Harbaugh Trail, or whether the crossing would be at seaside parking lot, both of those cases would require a standard streetlight. It's the Cobra Head Street Light, like typically see. Now, what we would do is, we would ensure that we have shields on those lights, we work with Coastal Commission to lessen any potential environmental impact, so we would make sure that all jurisdictional agencies and their permits are complied with those streetlights as well.
And then my last point about streetlights and traffic lights, if they are down the hill at the, they're pretty far away, and they're down out of the sightline of the ocean. If you put them up, you're actually rotated in any light, I mean, we can control the light of the actual traffic lights to some degree with the Fresnel lenses and focusing, but it's still going to go back towards the houses. The one that would be way down the slope down at the parking lot are going to be pointed more into the bluff side, and they're just farther away, and they're going to be down below the sightline. So I think it's a better solution all the way around from a blocking the view, ocean view of people in Solana Beach. So that's where I am right now, and with that, I will yield to Councilmember San Antonio.
Thank you. Thank you, City of Solana Beach, for the meeting. It was illuminating. I was, I got to learn a lot as well. I know it takes a lot of time. Obviously, as councilmembers, we're all busy, and staff, so I definitely appreciate your I am all, I'm for collaboration, I am. I do want to collaborate, but I think with a time constraint, if there is a time constraint, I feel like that window can close pretty quickly. Like I said, I'm all for collaboration, but also if there's, if there's no future design or if there's no design to come, I guess, I guess, not that I'm saying anything mean, but what's the possibility of collaborating if there is nothing to talk about? But again, I am all for collaboration. I just want to be sure that we're working towards something. I also think that Raul's comments about the parking lot, about that signal down there, that makes a lot of sense. We definitely have a lot of events going on down there, whether it's the surf contests with my young kids, that's kind of been one of our go-to beaches, is that beach because of the parking. Between there and Tide Park and Solana Beach, we kind of go back and forth between the two. But that parking lot is always filled. It's packed all the time during the summertime, even the winter. I understand there's also issues there with, you know, obviously the waves coming in and messing up the parking lot, but that is a very busy parking lot. So. So, you know, that's a great option. I mean, I know it probably goes against what the city of Solana Beach wants, but for me, I'm beholden to my city and what they want, and for the safety of my city, as well as, you know, county or the state or the United States, for the fact of the matter. But, it's important. That middle lane, that middle merge lane is kind of confusing. You don't really know that it's, you know, to get out there from the Cardiff parking lot, it's a little confusing. I've seen people sit at that, at that stop sign, waiting to merge when you can clearly just merge onto there, but they're waiting for cars to pass. So, that stoplight kind of makes sense there as well. Again, I'm all for collaboration. I'm happy to talk. I'm happy to, as long as there's, that conversation is going to move something forward, I'm happy, I'm happy for that. Clearly, I'm kind of leaning towards option C, but, again, at some point, our cities are going to have to, our city might have to ask something from you. So, collaboration for me is important. I'm not a bridge burner myself, but at the same time, like I said, I'm beholden to my city and the safety of it, so I'll yield.
Councilmember O'Hara.
All right.
You withdraw?
I withdrew my request.
Okay, I was going to say, I didn't see your hand go up there.
A couple of quick questions. One for the nature conservancy or Solana Beach, whichever can answer this. Can you give a more in-depth explanation of the environmental easement, and what the challenges of that are? Is it simply a ratio of plants you replace if you go into the easement? Or is it a off-the-board, no matter what the law, the law says you can't touch it?
Who's the question to? Is it to Jennifer?
Whoever can answer.
Can you repeat exactly?
So, in Solana Beach, the environmental easement? I've been calling it correctly, correct me if I'm wrong.
The conservation easement?
Thank you, the conservation easement. If they, if they were to build into it, they would have to, and I'm going off of what I've been told, but I'm asking because I don't know, I can't confirm what I've been told, and I want to confirm it with you. If they were to build into the environmental easement, or conservation easement, sorry, they would have to replace the vegetation at a ratio two to one or six to one, something, is that correct?
On the Solana Beach side, the city of Solana Beach owns the conservation easement on land that we own. So, we worked with the city of Solana Beach, as well as community members from the city of Encinitas, while we were designing this. In regards to, we haven't had any discussions about making impacts into Harbaugh seaside trails. My most recent conversations with the Solana Beach is that they wouldn't, we're protecting that area. So, but if there, if there were, if there were impacts made to it, then yeah, there'd be consequences to that. I don't know exactly how to answer the question in regards to specifically how many plants, if they made an impact, would have to be removed.
Do you want to see if Solana Beach staff could answer the question?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, I don't think we have the precise number, but how mitigation typically works, and I think we heard Jennifer say that the area was mitigated when the site was purchased. There was a conservation easement. That conservation easement is held by the city, so it's on the land, it's a part of the deed. It is also reflected in our zoning code, but we'll, let's talk about it from the land limitations. So, that doesn't allow for any grading or other improvements, including improved surfaces within the Harbaugh property that was dedicated, unless it is for restoration. So, that's the only caveat to that. And that restoration was done. All of the areas that you see that are vegetated in the aerial that we showed on our slide, those were areas that were restored from the previous condition because for decades, people have been traveling westward towards the beach. It's not just since the trail system's in there, they were coming over the train tracks before, now they're safely coming under. And then, they restored that, so that would be a mitigation for certain types of plants. They all have their different ratios. So, let's just say that the rare plant, I believe, is an Orkut's variety, Pincushion, thank you, I couldn't remember the full name. If there had a mitigation ratio of two to one or three to one, when they mitigated, if we were to disturb that same habitat, you almost exponentially, so it would double it at minimum. And I don't know, again, precisely the ratio, but that would generally be the case.
So, it's not that you can't put the path there, it's that there would be mitigation if you did?
We, we would have to change the grant deed to even consider any sort of improvements in that area.
Okay. Has there, has there always been, has there always been a catch basin in that lot?
The, there was historical development on that property many, many decades ago. It used to be a survey station at kind of the southern end. So, a lot of that restoration, and that was done with the trails.
Was there a catch basin on the lot? I see one in the picture, and I was, I've witnessed once, was there a catch basin there previously?
I don't know.
I'm getting a no from the conservation.
It may have been there from previous development.
So, it's part of the, what I'm seeing is the conservation behind you saying, no, it was not there.
The catch basin was part of the design of the.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so we're seeing a slight manipulation, mitigation of, maybe there is some flexion is what I'm seeing, which is good. What year did you purchase the, the transition of the property was 2018? Is that right? Dave, do you remember?
Councilmembers?
I'm sorry, councilmembers, you know, I apologize for not calling you councilmembers.
Yeah, I'm going to need you on the microphone, or.
You want to come up in?
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, the.
Sorry, I believe the property, it depends upon what you're specifically talking about. I believe the property was acquired around 2014, but there was, there was acquisition, and there was actually the application of the grant deed and the transition to open space easement and all that kind of stuff, which occurred over a couple-year period. But as far as, and Nature Collective may have a better idea of the exact purchase date, but it was around 2014. Okay, and then, when was the last time there were site pulls on that property? Because I know that's been a case a number of times, and that was. If I had to take a guess, that probably occurred around 2000? Okay. 2002? Yeah. Super. Yeah. Just trying to get the whole story. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. So, I, I sort of, so I sort of kind of look at this, and I mentioned this in my meeting with Solana Beach, sort of align with Deputy Mayor Lyons, and I don't really think we have a project, because I don't think we have true collaboration going on. So, so I want to ask a question of staff. Do we have to absolutely select a design today, or the grant won't go forward? Or can we select a design or vote on something today, just, I don't say just to get the grant, but to have the grant, and then work with Solana Beach to move forward now that we have information that they can move their trail, now that we have some ability for them to collaborate more with us?
Sure. Councilmember O'Hara, great question. So, we, the grant, as it is currently written, and how it has been approved by Caltrans, is with option A in mind. So, we would like, at a minimum, we need to accept that grant ASAP if we want to move forward with any of the three alternatives, or a deviation thereof. So, at a minimum, we need to, if there is appetite for council to move forward with A project, it would be recommended by staff to accept the grant. For alternatives B or C, or a derivation thereof, bless you, we would still have to request a scope change from Caltrans. Option A is the only project alternative on the table right now, where Caltrans would not require a scope change. So, and, and there is the potential that Caltrans can say no to a scope change of any kind.
So, I'm hearing like we, just because I hear a lot of different opinions up here that we're going to need a scope change no matter what. So, let me.
And I apologize.
No, no, go ahead, please.
One more thing I did want to add. We do have a timeline after we have our grant authorized. So, we would anticipate grant being authorized probably in early 2026, and we would have roughly a year and a half to complete design, once the grant is authorized. So, there is a bit of a timeline that we do need to make sure that we're getting through the design process, all the coordination process, and, you know, just our capital process in general.
Okay, thank you. It's all really helpful, and that helps us with strategizing here. Just going to dig into the designs a little bit really quickly. I do not support design C. What I think will happen is, when people get to that corner, they're going to cross anyways. I know I will. Sorry, Sheriff Shane, wherever you're at, I apologize, I'm going to jaywalk there. And I think most people will, too, because when you get there and you got your surfboard in hand, you're running across the beach to get in the water. You're going down, going down to the bathrooms that are there, you're not going to walk all the way down and go to the bathroom. I also oppose putting, for the environmental impact reasons, I oppose putting a sidewalk on the east side of the, of the 101 there. And lastly, in this design, you know, we just talked, I think it was three weeks ago, about this 101 section, and making some strong adjustments. And I think, really, if we're going to address that intersection, once we decide how we're going to approach that intersection with cycles, pedestrians, and cars, I think that's really when we look at that intersection. I don't think this is the time to look at that intersection. I do appreciate the foresight that Cardiff 101 shows in predicting that we do need to address that. So, I think, really thank you guys for bringing that to our attention. But at this time, I don't support option C, for those reasons. I do think, I also look at the option, option B, I do believe there are opportunities for less bright lights. I know, and I apologize for not knowing what they're called, but I know that by a lot of our Caltrans roads, especially Encinitas Boulevard, we have lights that are dull until you get very close to them, and they transmit their light quietly. Are those an option for this? For option B or?
I don't think, in Encinitas Boulevard, what, what we do have the option for is lights that new generation called zero bug rating. Bug rating is, yeah, zero backlight, basically, no amount of light goes behind the arm of the light. So, if your arm of the light is eight feet, the light basically drops right there, so there would be a wall of light, so nothing goes into the lagoon. That would be the zero B. The zero U would be the zero up light for our dark sky policy, and the G would be the glare. So, these are special lights that LED manufacturers do provide for these kind of special-condition roadway lighting, that we can install those.
Okay.
There'll be no impact on, other than the surface of the road.
So, so this is my recommendation. My recommendation is, we're going to have to review this anyways. We want to collaborate with Solana Beach. We want to be great neighbors, get together, and have all of this work out. I think in order to build trust, we select option B at this time, and then we go back to the drawing board to figure this out, apply to have it adjusted. I don't feel comfortable this time supporting option A, because I don't feel, I feel like if we support option A, we, I'll just say, we give too much, and we don't have a position to actually collaborate. It's going to be the same position we're in right now. So, for the purpose of negotiating, collaborating, I support option B at this time. I'll rest.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we keep on jumping around like who's next. So, what I, I have a question or two, and then I want to make a statement, and then let you know where I'm at. I feel like I've heard some different feedback on this. So, if we're considering option C, the rail trail would need to extend all the way to the intersection of Seaside. I guess I need, I guess I'm going to ask this as a question, I'm not quite sure, maybe Public Works, but I'm going to start with Solana Beach Public Works, because maybe you've got this in your head a little bit better. Your rail trail is on the east side of, of the 101, as you're coming towards, I mean, we all know that, right? So, as you're coming towards our jurisdictional boundary. So, at the, at the crossing is where the rail, wherever we put the crossing, that's where the rail trail crosses the road, and then we pick it up on our side and take it north.
Yes, but we are only looking at completing the missing segment within the Solana Beach boundary. So, we're not interconnecting it.
Right. Okay, yeah, within your boundary. So, that's where we pick up the question. The rail trail, as it's coming to the Encinitas city boundary, is on the east side of the road. So, I guess my, I feel like I've heard differing feedback. Can we fit the rail trail all the way to the intersection of the Seaside State Beach Park parking lot without taking a lane out, without a road diet?
So, so I guess, just to clarify, we do not, the city of Encinitas does not have a coastal rail trail in the south side, or, excuse me, on the, yeah, on South Coast Highway 101, south of Chesterfield. So, just wanted, wanted that to be clear. So, there is not technically an extension from the south that would connect to an Encinitas coastal rail trail.
Okay, that's fair. It's just, it's just nomenclature. It's a, it's a trail for pedestrians and bicycles.
So, as it, as it currently exists, we have a single-direction cycle track on the west side, and a pedestrian pathway on the west side. And then, we have a single-directional cycle track on the east side going north. So, those are, you know, substantially different than a, than the coastal rail trail, which is a mixed-use facility. That'd be like a class-one facility. So, a little, little different in that regard. But, to answer your specific question of whether we would have the width to do a cycle track, or, excuse me, a coastal rail trail extension all the way to the Seaside parking lot, we would not have that width without doing a road diet.
If I may add something, if we want to keep the cycle track, we won't have, we won't have the room. I just want to clarify, if the cycle track converts to just a regular bike lane, meaning the cycle track stops at the seaside, and we just have regular bike lanes, we will have enough room to keep four lanes of traffic, one left turn pocket into the seaside beach, and at a, if the walkway on the east is just five feet, we might have the room for it.
Sorry, I think we are now thoroughly confusing everybody. So, I apologize.
Just real quick, that would align with what goes into Solana Beach?
Not exactly, because they would need a lot more on the pavement. We only need five. They probably need way more than that.
So, sorry, just to.
But, your way of thinking is correct. Kind of aligns.
So, to bring everybody, I think, to a collective understanding here, what you see on the screen right now is what Abe was referring to. What Abe was referring to was, was simply having the pedestrian path on the east side. And I think, Deputy Mayor Lyons, you were more specific about the full width of the coastal rail trail.
Okay, that's fair. That was my question. But we could fit a five-foot pathway.
That's correct, yes. So, we have investigated that preliminarily, and we do have enough curb-to-curb existing width where we would be able to have five feet for a walkway. But as Abe was mentioning, we likely would have to lose the existing cycle track in both directions, south of the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
We'd still have class-two bike lanes, but no cycle track.
Honestly, I'm confused. So, we need to, we don't have enough information, and I need to see this in a drawing.
It's what's on the south, it's on the west side. Look, do you see the west side, that class-two? That's what would be on the east side of the highway.
I understand that, yeah. But, it's hard to talk through design when we don't actually have a drawing, and we're just not there yet. I understand that, so it's not a criticism. It's just part, goes back to my comment, we don't have enough information yet. We're, we're kind of waving our arms and saying, yeah, I want it like this. So, what I, so this is going to be a comment, and that is, it's clear to me now that we're going to have lights either way. We're going to have, if we're going to have a safe crossing, we're going to have lights. We can't avoid lights.
That's correct.
Abe, when we were looking at the signal at the Nature Visitor Center on Manchester, this was about five years ago, there was a big concern. this was about five years ago, there was a big concern from the neighbors there of the light spill, or the light glare, both, into their neighborhoods. You worked with them really, really well, really effectively to help shield that light. I think the neighbors were, were happy with the outcome there. Is that something, is what you did there, and what we were able to do for the neighbors there, very similar to the Zero Backlight? Was that what was used at Manchester, or was that an additional approach?
These days, it's way more effective.
Say that again?
These days, the, the LED technology is way more effective than what we did five years ago. So, so the light, like.
It would be superior, is what you're saying?
Yeah, absolutely no backlight. You would, when you walk on the street, you'll see a wall of light underneath the actual LED. There's absolutely nothing, you clearly see a line for the light.
Okay, all right. Given this information, I'm leaning in with where the mayor's going here with Option C, and what Rahul was suggesting, and Joy as well. I like the idea of an actuated signal, like a Swami's type signal at the Seaside Market, Seaside Market, Seaside State Park entry. I would suggest we also do a traffic study, if we're evaluating doing a crossing there, so we know what we're doing. Data's important, and we really need to make sure. If we're adding a crossing here for pedestrians that we will use to connect to some really important coastal assets, then we're, we're leaving it in a safe condition for everyone. So I'm concluding that I feel like that would be the safest way to go forward, would be Option C.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you. I, I would agree with Councilmember O'Hara with regards to where the people want to cross. The fact is, I do agree with Rahul and Joy in this regard, where in the future, we're gonna have to put a, a stoplight at Seaside anyway, just like Cardiff, all those years ago, we put the stoplight there. It's sometimes a pain, because there's one person leaving, or whatever the situation, but in the morning, leaving there with the protected bike lane, with cyclists, with motorcycles, with different bikes, with people coming from the, from south to north, so it'd be preferable to be Option B with the light, for now, for the next 10 years, but in the next 10, 15 years, we're gonna need, for the 50-year model, we're gonna need C. So instead of putting multiple things in, and it's inconvenient to people at Harbaugh, well, it just is what it is. So the one I can't get around, I'm gonna motion and move Option C, to get the meeting moving along.
Okay, and I will second that, and I don't have anything to add, other than I was trying to move things along at this point, so with the motion and the second, I'll go on to Councilmember O'Hara.
I'm gonna, great. I'm gonna counter motion, go back to my motion and put B, and I know I'm gonna get beat here, but I want the opportunity to explain why. We are looking at designing something right now with a design that's different than what's actually going to be there. We've already said it's not gonna look like this. And so whatever we design under this, may not match up with what we do in the future, and we do this all around the city. We do this piecemeal design that's, that's not continuous. We talked about things being flowing evenly, and this is how, this is how it happens. We, we designed something that is based on, right now, this design, which we just voted three weeks ago, isn't gonna look like this. It's gonna be different. So we're designing something now, based on what will be an old design, which is what happens up and down Encinitas Boulevard, it happens on Lucadia Boulevard, it happens on the 101, anyone, anyone who gets stuck at the bottom of Vulcan and Lucadia can, can feel the, the challenge of that. I think we're doing this, I, I don't think we should do C, because I think it is out of order, and, and I'm not saying it's a bad design, and I won't support it when it comes, when it comes forward in the correct order. I think there will be a light needed there, but this is not the time to design it. But this is about a crosswalk, where a crosswalk is needed, not where a light is needed. And if we do this wrong now, we're gonna be screwed up later, and it's, it goes backwards from what we've been doing, designing a citywide traffic flow plan, looking at ways to make traffic intuitive. When you're backtracking, it's really hard to do that. So I caution us to, to doing this. I don't, I think, you know, it does, I appreciate that it does put us in a position to keep collaborating with Solana Beach, but I think Option B does as well, and it doesn't set us up for a future problem.
And I've got the floor next. Option B, I think, either one, B or C would work, because really, we're just putting in for the, we, we know we have to apply for a modification, with either B or C at this point. And whether we start with B, or whether we start with C and collaborate with Solana Beach, the reason I'm starting with C, and then why I'm supporting C, is that it, I'm sorry about that, thought I was silenced. The reason, the reason I'm starting with C is that that is the longer term, and you just said, you, you wanna do the continuum, and, and I wanna get on that continuum, because I know I'm gonna need a light there. So whatever the corresponding other crossing is, whether it's right where is proposed now as another four-lane streetlight, so it doesn't back up into Encinitas, or whether ultimately we, we, you know, and I, I'm not there, I, I'm not gonna compromise and go to a two-lane at the position where it's proposed. I just do not see it as viable, and so far, I've heard nothing that says there is a viable solution that doesn't mandate a lane diet. So Option C is the longer-term vision, that's what I wanna design for, I wanna make it very clear that's what we're designing for. Option B is not that. So I'm, I'm for C. Councilmember Schaefer next, and then Councilmember San Antonio.
With the ultimate, with you're gonna go long-term, so that's, we have a year and a half to get the design, so that's some time, real time, to get the full master plan that we've talked about, and that's a different topic, but the ultimate thing, there would be an underpass, just like, like the rail trail.
Yeah, really?
I mean, that's the, that's the real thing, so there's nobody really, even interacting with cars, and there's no need for any slowing down, so that would be the ultimate. So if you wanna make it continuous, then let's put people under the freeway, or under the highway there, and get them out of the way completely. So that's the ultimate.
Yeah, that gets back to my point, that it's, we gotta cross somewhere. So Councilmember San Antonio.
Well, I mean, Councilmember O'Hara just kinda reminded me of something we talked about at, about the Santa Fe meeting. We talked about the bus stop, we talked about the light at the, at Santa Gita entrance, or at the, at the apartments, and we were trying to figure out if that was gonna be there, or how we're gonna inter, design something on Santa Fe with that in mind. So I guess I would have to agree with Councilmember O'Hara. I really, to be honest, I like C, but I think in, and I get it, in the 50-year, you know, outlook, that, you're right, I think we will need a light there, but for right now, I think that you're right, that we should, we voted on something to change the whole west side, and it's, you're right, it's gonna look completely different. So, I mean, I know we're, we still need to get, to get A, right, in order to get this grant.
Correct.
So, but I guess, you know, I, for the sake of this, I, and for the sake of collaboration, to keep our cities talking, I, I vote for B.
Councilmember San Antonio, are you seconding?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember O'Hara's?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a substitute motion in place.
We have a motion to approve Option C, and then we have a substitute motion to approve Option B.
Okay, and then I've got Deputy Mayor Lyons and O'Hara, and then I would like to call the question, because it's getting late.
So I, I do have one other question for the Public Works Director, just to make sure I'm clear, and showing Option C, it's, it's not going to impact the design of your rail trail on the east side. We will, what, what I anticipate is we'll work with what you're doing up until it's your jurisdictional boundary, and then we'll take it from there. Now, so maybe it's not a question for you, as I'm looking at Dan, maybe I should ask him that question, that we would then take care of that connection from their boundary to where we are proposing crossing.
And I apologize, Madam Deputy Mayor, I, I was chatting with Abe, didn't hear the first part of your question.
So Solana Beach will design and work with us on that, what that design is, all the way up to their jurisdictional boundary, and then at that point, we will take that connection and move to, and extend to where we're going to safely cross where we are proposing, correct?
Not, not 100% correct. If we, as an agency, don't have an agreement with what that extension would look like, we may not extend the same cross-section further north. Meaning, if we, let's just say, for instance, we, the council would like to move forward with Alternative C.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so the trade-off is cross-section versus where, where you cross, and you have to kinda trade off that cross-section for where you think the best crossing is?
That, that's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so I'm up next.
Yep.
Three weeks ago, we voted for a Class 2 bicycle lane on the east side of the road. In Option C, if you don't want a lane diet, you can't have a bike lane over there, and our cyclists who are trying to get from Solana Beach, down the 101 into Cardiff, will have to use the share-o.
I apologize.
Or lose a lane, right?
Councilmember O'Hara, that would be incorrect, and I apologize, that's our fault, because this very high-level concept exhibit is not easy for, for anyone to digest. We would have, at a minimum, a Class 2 bike lane going both northbound and southbound.
Correct, but we'd have to get rid of a lane to do that, because it's.
No, no, we would not.
Where would it go?
We would generally get our width, right now, the, the current cross-section has a seven-foot wide bike lane and a three-foot wide buffer in each direction. So that's six feet of buffer that we would utilize, we'd get rid of the, we would no longer have a cycle track, it'd just be a Class 2 bike lane with no buffer, and that those six feet, we'd utilize for the pedestrian path on the east side.
So when we voted last time, we voted to have a Class 2 bike lane on the east side, we took the extra remaining footage, square, square foot, or feet, and we moved it to the west side of the road, and we used it. So we would lose what we changed on the west side of the road.
To make it a little simpler, I do have an aerial view here that I can show you. So the current width, right at the seaside, south of the seaside intersection, the curb-to-curb width is about 75 feet. We have five lanes of traffic, assuming an 11-footer lane, that would be 55, remains 20 feet. If we leave five feet for this potential Easterly walkway, that'd give us an extra 15 feet remaining, that can give us two seven-and-a-half-foot bike lanes on each side. Now, you're correct, north of this, we are going to a totally different layout, the direction from council at the previous meeting was a two-way cycle track on the west side, with bike lanes on both sides, eliminating the existing one-way cycle track, which we have to make sure that it kinda lines up with this different, totally different cross-section. But that's a design issue that, for Alternative C, we have to figure out how we.
So when you get to the end of C, you're saying there's space to put a Class 2 bike lane, and then it shifts over, all the lanes will shift right at that point?
There would be a broad shift that's.
Like a chicane, like the chicane on Saxony.
It might not be that big, but again, it's very hard to.
It'd be at least five feet, or as wide as the sidewalk.
There would be a minimum five-foot drop at that corner, correct?
So we could, in, in many ways, actually create a danger by doing this. I also, I just look at it too, and I also say, we just, the, the, you just, you just finished last year, re, doing the, redoing the habitat right along this, correct?
Recently, yes.
Yes, and so I, as in, as someone who loves the environment, like, I don't, I don't wanna mess with that and, and risk, risk that either. I, I just think at this, and I look at this design, this is clearly a more expensive design than what we have currently in effect on this grant. And so for those reasons, I still push that we, we go for B. I think, I think C is, I think C is running too far ahead at the moment.
So, and I apologize to interrupt, Councilmembers. One thing that Abe and I did wanna bring to your attention as, as a possibility to consider, is if there is a desire potentially between Options B or C, you direct staff to accept the grant, and also direct staff to maybe bring 30% design level, or 10% design level plans of both B and C to council, so you guys have a little bit better of an idea of what the layout of both of those options would be. Right now, again, we're just at a very high-level concept, so that might help bring a little bit more light into the discussion.
I can show the striping plans for you to see how the transitions happen, and get a better feeling about future striping.
I, and I add Dan's idea to my motion.
Well, wait, we have a substitute motion right now, so the real question is to.
Didn't call it.
Jim and to Marco, and, on whether they would wanna modify to, basically, but we have to go forward with something for the, for the grant, right? So we have to name one of them for the grant, and then bring them back, right?
So technically, no.
No, okay.
Part of the reason why we are asking for a direction from council is because we do have that 18-month time limit for our design, so we do wanna be sure that we're able to, to get through the design process. We need to move forward with accepting the grant. That is with Options A. Regardless of, of the decision tonight, that is the option that was in the grant application, so we have to move forward with accepting Option A. Once we receive authorization from Caltrans, that the grant is now fully processed, which is gonna be in early 2026, then we would submit a scope change request for council, or, excuse me, from Caltrans, and that could be for either Options C, or B, or derivation thereof.
And I think the mayor's asking if we'll accept a moderation, of, of, a version of, accept both B and C scope change with, and accept the grant.
Yeah, accept the grant as A, however, with the intention that we will come back with not A, but a 30% or high-level, more detailed concepts of B versus C.
I think what I'm hearing, council is mostly interested in how the striping layout works, so we'll do, it would be a relatively low cost, obviously, we'll be double-spending for that 10% of the design until we figure out which one we're doing. But I think once council actually sees the striping, how it lines up, basically, the three segments, the Solana Beach segment, the between B and C segment, and then the rest of the corridor, then council would have a, a lot easier idea of how they want to proceed with these alternatives.
And that gives us the opportunity to have further dialogue with Solana Beach.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
As long as Councilmember San Antonio go back, that, I'm second, I'll accept that.
So we have a substitute motion with that modification.
Yep.
I'm gonna try and actually call the question, if you can read back.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I have it correct. So the substitute motion is to accept the grant as Option A, with possible scope change for Options B and C, and direction to staff to prepare 30% designs for both B and C.
For B and C, and I don't know that it's 30% designs, what is it? It's just a layout.
We probably will be closer to about 10%. We'll, we'll make sure that it's adequate for, for a decision to be made.
Yeah, it's base, a basic layout, so we can see lane shifts and things like that, and we can also answer the question about the easement, conservation easement on our property, on our right-of-way.
Yeah, that, we can look into that absolutely.
Okay, great.
So is that direction to staff to prepare preliminary designs, or?
10% designs, for lack of a better term.
I would just request that we show survey, so we know exactly what we're dealing with, and just have that level of detail, so it's not gonna change later when we actually get our survey.
So we can do that. My hesitation here, Madam Deputy Mayor, is to get a survey done, we would have to get a consultant on board, we would have to spend.
Okay, I'll stop you right there, use the GIS data that we have?
I, I, I would recommend that, because we.
Because you have confidence it's accurate enough.
And at least in the curb-to-curb line width, so, so I, I think that would be adequate, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion second, can I call the question?
And that motion carries unanimously.
Excellent.
I wanna thank the city of Solana Beach for coming and, for your partnership on this.
So, and continuing working with us on this. So with that, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, if we can really do a 10-minute break, it's been three hours, so. Phew. Ah.
I have to leave.
Okay.
I will leave. I'm just going to be off.
That's fine. Whoa. Calling Marco?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it turns out we have some remaining work on 10A, just paperwork essentially.
Yeah, so we just need a motion to approve staff recommendation number one, which is authorizing the city manager to accept and administer the state funding, et cetera, et cetera. And then also item number three, which is adopting the city council resolution, which is amending the budget for this project.
So, so we did do A, didn't we, by saying we would accept? You're just, you want us to authorize the city manager to accept? Okay. So I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to accept the grant per our previous motion and...
Adopt city council resolution 2025-115, which is amending the 2025-26 budget.
Second. Okay, I got a motion in a second. Call a question.
And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Takes us to item 10B.
Okay. 10B is a summary of actions in response to the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement operations in Encinitas, and our city manager will handle this one tonight.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. Yes, the report was prepared by Mike James, our deputy city manager. He is currently at a conference, so myself, city manager, and assistant city manager Jay Shorm will take this item. So this is a follow-up to the September 17th council meeting where council gave us direction. There were seven motions that were made to take the following actions. Launch your Know Your Rights campaign, submit freedom of information requests to document ICE operations in the city of Encinitas. Explore establishing safe zones such as schools, churches, citywide, or other options. Explore joining lawsuits such as Long Beach/Santa Ana challenging the legality of ICE operations. Number five, explore forming a communications, community group such as text change. Number six, send appropriate letters to federal agencies protesting the fear-inducing tactics and to request federal partners to be present to respond to questions from the city and community. And what was added to that one was also sending a possible MOU. And number seven, explore and identify other legal mechanisms available to the city. So tonight, I wanted to give an update on some of those, and also we have a draft letter within this report, as well as a draft MOU, that we would like to get council input and approval, so that if council would like, we can send that as well. So the first one, we did a Know Your Rights campaign, we created a webpage, and actually what we did too is we upgraded, we updated it to include immigration information. And what that has now is it has the Know Your Rights campaign, both in English and Spanish. It also has all of the Freedom of Information Acts that the city has submitted due to ICE operations. And then it also has the official statements we've received from ICE regarding those operations. So that has been done. Freedom of Information Acts, those have been completed, and it will be the continued practice of the city to do a Freedom of Information Act anytime there is any type of Border Patrol or ICE enforcement in the city. The next one is safe zones. So we did go ahead and research and discuss this. Basically, at this point, it used to be where they discouraged operations at sensitive locations such as schools, places of worship, and hospitals, however, that was rescinded at the beginning of 2025. It's important to note that there are limitations to what the city can do and where we can have ICE actually do their operations. The city cannot limit federal officers from lawfully exercising their authority in public spaces. Any policy that the city considers should be carefully worded to balance the perception of creating a false sense of security. So part of the issue is, we've talked with the sheriff's department, and as you know, the sheriff's department does not aid in immigration enforcement, yet they will not hinder it as well. If they are called to an incident, they will certainly show up, they will be there to monitor the situation, however, they do not get involved. So setting up some type of safe zone, we really wouldn't have any type of enforcement. The other thing is, I know that we have talked about in some of our other ICE information items, the city does receive just over $107 million in federal funding. We talked about, and I sent an email to council about a month or so ago, or two months ago, from our fire chief, talking about the fact that it talks about that cities that hinder immigration enforcement operations do have the chance of possibly losing federal funding. So I did want to just remind council that that email was sent. Joining other lawful lawsuits and legal mechanisms, I also do have Tarkun Preziosi, our city attorney here. We researched current and pending lawsuits challenging the legality of ICE operations. Those included Long Beach and Santa Ana. From a procedural standpoint, there are limited opportunities for the city to become a party to current litigation. However, staff is continuing to monitor pending actions and will return to city council if there is any opportunity in the future to join any type of legal action. Next up is our community communications groups. Basically, we have many different methods that we do communicate, everything from the 211, Alert San Diego, city newsletters, Genesis Project, My Encinitas app, and even reverse 911. So the city doesn't have the capability of setting our own text message up. One of the things we did talk about is probably the My Encinitas app would be the best way to get that out. We put on there a news center icon, so if we were to put out any information to the city, the My Encinitas app would be a great way to do it, because all residents can subscribe to that, it's free, non-residents, and we could put out the latest and greatest information as well. And lastly, it was to draft a letter to different federal agencies, including ICE, and we could also do Border Patrol. The first was a letter that basically has some asks, and it talks about that we've had several operations, it has caused fear in our community and some distress, so, you know, we're looking for some cooperation. The other one is actually an MOU that outlines what we do expect from ICE and Border Patrol. One of the things I do want to say is, we have been given notice ahead of probable operations. That actually goes to our law enforcement agency, which is the San Diego Sheriff's Department. Captain Watts has received notification from ICE that they were likely to do a probable action in, or an enforcement in Encinitas. Sometimes the action did happen, for the most part, we've received that notification and no action was taken by ICE at that time. So again, the letter basically outlines some asks. It would be, obviously, staff has written it, it would be approved by council, and it would be signed by the mayor. So we have that. And then second up would be the MOU, and the MOU looks a lot like the other MOUs we've had in the city. It talks about the purpose, authority, and I just want to go over briefly on that one, the responsibilities on that one. So we ask that ICE does give us information no fewer than two hours before a possible enforcement action might take place. That notification would be either a phone call, text message, or email. And the notification would at least include date and general time, approximate location, number of personnel, name and contact information for supervisor. And then during the operations, ICE personnel shall have proper badges displayed to verify what each participant in the law enforcement is. And I know during briefings, the mayor talked about also making sure that their actual uniforms either have ICE, federal agent, Border Patrol on it, so we could better identify who is there. The post-operational activities would include providing the city with a summary of actions within 24 hours of the completion of the enforcement. The summary would include the exact date, time, and location of the activity. It would be a summary description of the incident. It would list all the names of the individuals apprehended and their individual charges. And it would also have the location of individuals apprehended. Also during briefings, the mayor talked about, again, where they're being detained, and then if they were being deported, or if they were being moved to somewhere else within the United States. And the city's responsibilities, we would receive the notification, we would safeguard the information for officer and community safety. And another bullet point we talked about in the briefing is that as a city, as soon as we receive that official statement... as we receive that official statement from ICE or Border Patrol, we would have it up on our website within 24 hours of receiving it. And again, it talks, there's the termination amendments and demnification. It's basically standard language. So tonight, what we're looking for is, number one, we wanted to provide an update to council and the community on the actions we have taken, the fact that we've enhanced our website to not just have the know your rights, but immigration information. And we can always continue to add different bullet points or topics as we do more. For instance, if the letter, we would put the letter, if signed by council, we'll put the letter that we sent, we'll put the MOU if it comes back signed, and things like that. I do want to also let you know that I did attend our CCMA meeting, which is a city manager's group, last Wednesday, and there were some retirements announced in ICE and Border Patrol. However, I was able to meet the new gentleman who's taking over at Homeland Security, the chief officer. I met his chief of staff, and I also met the acting Border Patrol agent. So I personally have all of their cards, contacts, and emails. So I definitely have the right people to contact if we have any type of Border Patrol or immigration enforcement in our city. So tonight, that's presented to council. I look forward to hearing from you on the letter and the MOU, and any further direction council would like to give. So thank you very much.
And I think we already have the ICE statements that we have received. That's posted already on the website, so that's important, that it's there and you can see. And the best part is, they are attributable to ICE from an ICE email. So at least we're going with facts.
It actually has the person's name who sent it to.
Yeah, yeah. And so the only comments I had, and I think you hit most of the ones, just to be clear, on the letter, ICE had told us that they would honor not going to hospitals too. So I wanted to add hospitals in there. On the MOU, you hit my comment about not only proper badges, but uniforms indicating there are federal agents displaying police/federal agent or equivalent. I think the only thing you missed in the disposition of any people apprehended is, were they released? Are they in custody? And then you said the location, et cetera. And then the rest you hit. So with that, I'll yield to council member Schaefer.
Are there any public comments?
Two.
Okay, let's go with public then.
Teresa Beauchamp, followed by Kathy Stinger.
Hi again, and thank you, city manager, for all the effort you have made and the connections you've made too with the federal agencies. I know it'll help protect our community. I strongly support the city council's draft with the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency. It mandates advanced notification to city and local enforcement officials regarding forthcoming ICE operations within our jurisdiction. This measure is a crucial step towards fostering public safety, trust, and transparency within our community, particularly among immigrant populations who may otherwise fear engaging with local police or utilizing essential city services. By receiving advanced notice, our city government and police department can proactively manage potential public safety concerns, offer appropriate guidance to residents, and ensure that our local officials are not blindsided by federal actions that directly impact the well-being of our community members. This agreement respects the federal government's role while simultaneously upholding our city's commitment to the fair, informed, and safe treatment of all our residents, thereby strengthening the overall fabric of our city. Even if ICE leadership scoffs at this request, it is the right thing for you to do, to ask for support of the public safety and dignity of all Encinitans. Thank you for your efforts to protect and defend our neighbors who are being profiled by skin color, workplace, and the language that they speak.
Mayors, council members, and staff, on my way to work on October 15th, I witnessed an ICE raid on Quail Garden Drive at the intersection of Encinitas Boulevard. I made a U-turn and pulled into the parking lot on the corner, and I began recording what I saw in order to bear witness and create a record of what was unfolding. A man with a vest labeled "police" and his face covered, recorded me and threatened to arrest me if I interfered, although I was simply sitting in my stopped vehicle recording and not interacting. He did not identify himself when I asked him to, but got in his vehicle and drove off. I then got out of the car and went across the street where I spoke to some of the construction workers. One of them shared the video that has since been seen by many of armed masked agents swarming the streets chaotically in the midst of traffic and chasing several individuals. I later received a video from a resident in the apartments at that corner of a man being tased and yanked down a stairwell. The aggressor is the same man who videotaped me. According to a Telemundo 20 report that came out two days later, the victim was a U.S. citizen who was chased, assaulted, and arrested, only to be released later that day without charges. Later, I learned that several parents had been taken earlier that morning from the apartment buildings, including those of young children, leaving several mothers alone to care for them, and in at least one case, an aunt left to care for a child whose mother and father were both taken. Families are traumatized and terrified, and our community was endangered once again by a reckless, inept, and violent operation. I can now imagine that any agency has as its protocol swarming an intersection to chase and assault a person suspected without evidence of rock throwing, as ICE claimed the man attacked with the teaser was. This kind of chaotic activity on our street is unacceptable, dangerous, illegal, and devoid of due process. I urge you to investigate proper protocol, beginning by asking our own sheriff about procedures for the investigation and arrests of suspected crimes, and then include language in the MOU that conveys expectations that ICE respect not only constitutional rights like due process, but procedures that protect the community. I appreciate and support the items in the MOU as just read, but this issue goes beyond policy and procedure. As I've become involved in supporting families to simply have food or to help detainees communicate with the outside world, I have learned their stories. They are people simply trying to make lives for themselves and their children. They are a pair of young Guatemalan women who want their children to learn to read and write, which they did not. They are a young Haitian man whose father backed the assassinated president, leading all the family's men to flee for their lives. They are not unlike my great-grandfather, who fled violence and poverty at the turn of the last century to build a life starting with selling fruit from a pushcart in Chicago. Of course, I want the city to exercise to the fullest extent the legal, their legal authority, and I urge you to do so with this MOU.
Thank you.
Can I just finish one sentence?
I can't.
Come on, we're two. There's two of us, Bruce.
I know, but I have to be fair.
Okay.
I just have to, so...
I just want to hear your moral authority along with the legal. Thank you.
I just have to be fair up here.[1064.15][1064.15](applause) Okay. With that, council member Schaefer.
I appreciate the report. I appreciate the comments. I move to approve.
Council member O'Hara.
I'll second that motion. Yeah, I appreciate the work of the staff and the city manager, everybody, to really dive into this, see what scope of what we could do with this, and really kind of put together the best piece we could, given really challenging circumstances, you know, regardless of what you feel about this matter. It's a, I think we can all say that this should be, we shouldn't have calamity at an intersection like that. My daughter witnessed that, and she's 11, and I had to explain it to her, and that's life. You explain that life isn't all roses. But I think we all agree that, you know, something's not right in all of this, and I applaud, I applaud the city and its residents for coming out and pushing this measure forward.
Rest. And then Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Yeah, I was gonna also add my support for it, but now the motion's been put forward and seconded. The only thing I have is a question. Does the motion include the submitting the final letter based on the comments the mayor included to the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement and the final memorandum of understanding? Is that what the intent was?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Council member San Antonio.
I just want to say, I'm in support of this as well. It is a tough situation. This is a tough thing for a lot of the residents here in Encinitas or nationwide. I'm happy that we are able to push this as close to, I guess, the boundary as we can to kind of keep it within the boundaries of being sure we don't touch any of our triggers that would possibly remove federal funding. So for me, I'm glad that we were able to at least push as much as we could on this, as close to that line. So I'm in support of this as well. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll hop in with a couple of update comments. Number one, there was an October 25th, I think it was, or 24th article in the New York Times that talks about shakeup at the ICE and Border Patrol. And look, and lo and behold, our special agent in charge of ICE in San Diego County, Imperial County, retired suddenly, and likewise with his equivalent in the Border Patrol. Fortunately, our city manager has tracked down the replacements already. And we don't know, the article made the whole point that they were replaced, basically, or could have been replaced, basically because they weren't hitting quotas. And so far, they seem to want to play by the same rules and keep us informed. And so we're gonna reduce this to practice, try and get the MOU signed, and I think to Teresa's point, even if they don't, that'll be a statement, and we need to do it. Let's see, what else did I have? One other point I wanted to make on, I forget what it was. So with that, we'll call a question.
And I just want to make sure that's to approve the draft letter and the draft MOU with the changes noted by Mayor Lyons.
Right. Approve and send.
Approve and send, okay.
I think that was Deputy Mayor Lyons' point.
And that motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Yay. Thank you.[1295.58][1295.58](applause)
Thank you for staying and speaking.
Yeah, really. So now we're gonna move on to 10C, establishing a uniform and consistent roundabout signage and strapping citywide in accordance with the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And it would be, contact person is city traffic engineer Bandigan. You have the floor.
Good evening again, honorable mayor, council members, members of public, a Bandigan against the traffic engineer, hopefully a much shorter item this time. This is, as you mentioned, mayor, establishing a uniform and consistent roundabout signage and strapping citywide. This was a direction that we received from council, clear about the possibility of having some sort of standardized signage and strapping policy for our roundabouts. As you know, we have five existing roundabouts in the city, three new roundabouts are in construction, will be in construction very soon. In September, our Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission reviewed staff recommendation and did support this. This is the location of our existing five. It should be noted that what we're proposing tonight is just a bare minimum, that we will be uniformly applying to all of our roundabouts, but we do have the option of adding a little bit more based on specific circumstances. Our existing conditions have signage and strapping at different locations, as you know. Several of our roundabouts are about 20 years or more old. These were originally designed with the guidelines of MUTCD at the time of construction. They were periodically changed. MUTCD has updated its roundabout signage recently. The last two versions had a lot of new updates on roundabout signage and strapping. We did do a citywide evaluation of what we have and what the differences between our different signage and strapping markings are. What we're recommending for our minimum standards, again, as I said, is to enhance our signage and strapping with existing MUTCD guidelines, circular intersection signs with 15-mile advisory speed at each approach, a pedestrian crossing warning signage, the no traffic in circle that for any reason was, I believe, removed from the most recent version of MUTCD. We still want to keep it below our yield signs. We want to have yield marking, shark teeth at every entry, shared lane marking as needed, and the roundabout directional arrow. There will be site-specific improvements, again, based on necessity. Case in point would be our El Portal, where we did add rectangular rapid flashing beacons for the crossing due to proximity to Paul Equis School, which will not be our standard practice at all of our roundabouts. This would be a similar, we are using an aerial view of El Portal, but again, this is just for illustration purposes. We did change the name of the street to Major and Minor. But as you can see, we have the yellow circular sign for the roundabout with the 15-mile advisory. We have the shark teeth. We have the pet crossing signs, and the yield to traffic in circle signage, and the chevrons at the roundabout itself to kind of show the direction of travel. That concludes my presentation. I am open to questions. Thank you.
Any questions of clarification? And do we have any public?
No.
No, wow. Any questions at all?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion.
I just, super quick question. Do all of our roundabouts have, I've never checked, do all of our roundabouts have four crosswalks?
I believe all of them have the marked crossing, with the exception of the Quail Gardens, which doesn't have the islands, but I think has the crosswalks.
Sorry to interrupt.
Which I wouldn't have it for, but all roads, I'm sorry, all roads. So they'll all, they'll only have the sign if there's a crosswalk. They're not gonna, we're not gonna have all these signs no matter what. It's gonna be, just for clarification, all these, it's just where the crosswalk is.
Correct.
Okay. And then because Quail Gardens is a little bit different, do we need to have the arrow signs in the middle on that one? It's a very different structure than our other roundabouts, and it's so tiny, I can't see the signs fitting.
I think one option would be to just put it for Quail Approach, not to put it on the side approaches, because, I mean, the school side, the school side, and then the Botanic Gardens side, I mean, they don't really need to see the sign.
Okay.
If that helps, yeah.
Appreciate you coming forward with this. I think this will be helpful. Rest.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Just quickly, based on that comment, Abe, I was thinking the same thing about the modified smaller roundabout. So what you're saying then is that this would be modified for something smaller, that's smaller, and it would be more unique to the site? So it might not be applied directly, if it's a smaller, this would be for the more standard, the more standard roundabouts.
That's exactly right, Madam Deputy Mayor. This is the standard application for a normal use roundabout, where we do have special applications. The existing quick build on Quail Gardens, El Portal, those are a little bit more unique, and they will have some modifications.
Thank you.
But this is more or less the standard that we'd like to bring forward.
Thank you.
Okay. And then you said we have five roundabouts, which we do, and we have two in construction, as I recall too. So I assume this would apply to the new ones. Second thing was nighttime visibility. When I've looked at the accident report from El Portal Roundabout, it sure seems to be, it could be an illumination, could be a reflection. I think the Chevron signs will help. My concern is, what I think what looks to be happening, could be happening, is that especially inebriated drivers are hitting the apron, and which they miss the sign. Well, there was no sign there before, but they hit the apron, and then they lose control, and they go off at various angles and into various objects. Is there anything that you would consider that would help, either through lighting or through reflective elements or painted elements, a way to make the apron very obvious to nighttime drivers that there's an obstacle there, they need to go around? And I think the Chevron's a good start.
There are three different things that we're currently looking at. One is to have an illuminated crossing, LEDs installed in pavement that would turn on with the push button of the RFB. Now, obviously, as you said, that wouldn't necessarily work at night, because there might not be anybody there pressing that crossing. But that illumination would start flashing if somebody presses the button. The second one is, we're looking into realigning the reflectors that are currently installed around the roundabout to do a better one with higher visibility. I'm still not deciding to put actual LEDs there, but that would be our third. If that is a direction that council want to provide us, we do have the option of putting actual flashing LEDs, the dusk-to-dawn lights, that would start flashing around the roundabout. That would be a third.
I wasn't looking, I'm not looking for... I wasn't looking, I'm not looking for flashing, I'm looking for, I love this as a great start of a standard protocol approach for roundabouts. What I'm asking is, do you think you've solved the problems that are causing the unusual accident rate at El Portal, as an example? And what I've seen driving through there, it's pretty dark. And so if there were reflective elements on the drive over apron, and they would be drive over type reflectors, maybe that's it. They don't even have to go into this rendition. I just want you to keep improving this document, so that as you come up with better ideas and look at our five, soon to be seven, roundabouts, and see how they operate, that we're constantly going back and improving the protocol, and then come back to council for the budget in order to upgrade all of the roundabouts, because the safer you make those roundabouts, the less potential insurance claims we have, the less lawsuits we can have, too, the less accidents that occur.
And a couple items to that point, Mr. Mayor. El Portal is a little bit of a unique situation. We do have reflectors on the mountable curb, the inscribed mountable curb right now, but they're really not working well. I don't think that they're oriented quite correctly. So Abe and his team, they're looking at upgrading that. That is not an element that we are anticipating putting at every roundabout, because we don't have the same issue on the other roundabouts that we do have at El Portal. If we do determine that any specific roundabout does turn into a problematic, well, I should say, does provide evidence that drivers are not adequately seeing it, then we will address that particular location. But in general, we're not planning on adding reflectors to every roundabout.
Okay. And Councilmember O'Hara.
I just, I was going to say, I don't think putting any more reflectors than we have out there is going to make a difference. If we want to make a difference at El Portal, we have to have engineering go out with a breathalyzer and check everyone who gets in the 101, because that's what the problem is, and they're not, these guys can't fix that. So I follow through the motion, I think we should all vote.
Yep. Call the question.
Motion carries unanimously, takes us to item 10D.
Okay, this is a request from the Public Health and Safety Commission to increase the frequency of meetings from four meetings quarterly to six meetings annually. Or four meetings, it's not four meetings quarterly, or four meetings, which is quarterly, to six meetings annually.
Is that a motion to approve, or yes?
No, no, no. I'm going to do one thing.
Me again, me two more times.
Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, here you go.
Okay, I've got a second. Any discussion? If not, let's call the question. And then I will need a motion to extend to 11 o'clock and no later.
Second.
Hold on.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are we, do we seem to be?
Councilmember O'Hara. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Now I need a little housekeeping to no further than 11 o'clock?
Second.
Okay. So motion and a second?
I'm sorry, in San Antonio.
Pressure's on, Josh.
There you go.
Sorry, Chief Gordon.
Yeah, we have to put limits on Chief Gordon.
Well, thank you. I do want to recognize our Public Health and Safety Commissioner Chair, Steve Zdenowskis, for staying here all night, so we appreciate him being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay. So we're now on to 10E, which is the Leavenhein Fire Station Transition Plan, Phase Implementation for Facility Development Apparatus and Staffing. And Fire Chief Gordon, you have the floor.
All right, I will try to make this quick, so you only give me an hour. So per council direction, we went back to the drawing board about how to get Leavenhein a fire station, right? To get it a fire station that can house a Type 1 fire apparatus, as well as three personnel. So the current limitations right now, just as a reminder, we only have a, we have a fire station, it's in a commercial building that has a patrol, which is a lesser apparatus than a Type 1 fire engine with two people. All of our other incident fire stations are housed with a Type 1 engine or a truck with the appropriate three personnel. So I know you guys have heard me say this, Leavenhein is our most threatened wildfire community that we have in the city. We do have some new very high fire hazard severity zones that include a locadia in Cardiff now, and we're going to work towards that with some of the gap analysis and wildfire and vegetation management prevention in the future. So, but today we're focused, obviously, on Leavenhein Fire Station 6. So, May 28, 25, Councilmember Marco San Antonio gave this council-initiated item. The four things we got was increase daily staffing, deploy Type 1 engine, evaluate the costs, and then accelerate that construction. So we came up with two phases. Our first phase for the short-term improvements would be temporary fire station deployment, Type 1 engine placement, and third firefighter added. And then our phase two would be the completion or construction of a permanent fire station in the future. So the short-term enhancements that we're looking at right now is providing a temporary fire station at Little Oaks Park. The cost would be approximately $1.6 million. And then, right now, we've allotted $400,000 to PBK for design permitting and community outreach. Once we get to May, we'll have a better idea of the complete cost of what that fire station would run us, and then get a little better of a timeframe of when we could be doing construction on that fire station. We also need a Type 1 fire engine, right? So at the moment, our mechanic has assured me that we could use our reserve engine at the moment. We do have two Type 1 fire engines coming that have already been ordered and set aside in the budget for the end of 2026. So when we're looking at timeframes, the reserves we have now are pretty old, they're American, they're Frances. They've been reserves for a long time. And once we move these fire engines that these new ones will replace, we'll move one of those out to Station 6 to buy us a little bit more time. We will eventually need to purchase a Type 1 fire engine, which is approximately $1 million in the future, but we do have some time before we do that. We're looking at maybe fiscal year '26, '27, or further, depending on how our reserves can last. And then, obviously, the enhanced staffing, right? So with the Type 1 engine, we need an engineer or a third firefighter on shift. So the overtime for a year of staffing would be approximately $648,000. And then if we add a full-time employees, three of them, would be about $808,000 a Phase two, looking at a possibly six to six, the 500 square foot, excuse me, fire station with three bays. The reason we're asking for three bays is we can put our brush engine out there, which we just said is our highest wildland threat, so we should put our wildland-specific apparatus out there. Crew capacity, we would be able to upgrade from just three to six during wildfire weather. And those are just temporary assignments, so, but we would have a fire station that could accommodate that. And then, like I said, seasonal flexibility. And right now, we're estimating costs at about $10 to $12 million for a permanent station, but I do think that will go up as the years tend to move on. We are still in discussions with the county about some land swap ideas. They've been very amenable to some of our ideas that we're having, so eventually we'll be bringing back that to the council here as well. I'll run through this quick, because I know it's late, and I only have an hour, and I have one more item to do after this. So the benefits of having a real fire station, Type 1 engine and three people, is that we've become more NFPA compliant. Four people on a fire engine is what is the NFPA 1710 compliance, but will get us up to three. We have improved response capability, our ISO rating will be protected at a level two or a rating of two, class two. And then we are trying to get us to a class one, and that will help us on our way to get there. And then, obviously, having a third person on the fire engine provides a little increased safety for our crews. So just a quick financial overview of the next steps. $1.6 million would need to have, we'd have to have a discussion with that with our next budget cycle, with '26, '27. And then talk about the million-dollar fire apparatus in the future, maybe '26, '27, '27, '28. And then our staffing, if we're going to use full-time employees or overtime. We did not get the SAFER grant this last time. They did not tell us why, they don't tell you why. But I think with the timing that we have, we'll still be able to apply for the SAFER grant again next year. And we'll do the best we can with that, get some grant writers to assist, and I think the city manager would like to say something.
Thank you. And I just want to let you know that we did some research, and we talked to a couple of their cities that did receive the SAFER grant. And it looks like probably, El Cajon was one that got it, and they did about a third of a match. So they did about 33%, so their cost. So it looks like what we may want to do that may make us a stronger candidate is put a little skin in the game. A lot of times you'll get a grant when you show that you've got some commitment, but again, only putting up one-third and getting two-thirds, I think that's a great deal. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you. We put in here that aligns with our city goals, and so we'll skip that one real quick, because you guys know that. And then, just moving forward on the timeframes, May of 2026 is when PBK says that they will have a design and permit of the temporary station. As we move into the budget cycle, '26, '27, we'll have those conversations about what that looks like in the future for constructing a temporary station and applying some kind of budget money to that, if the council desires. And then, Type 1 fire engine, and then moving into that phase two of having that conversation about a permanent fire station in the future. So tonight, the recommended action for city council is to receive this presentation, provide direction on the phase implementation approach for enhancing fire and emergency services coverage in Leavenhein. And that ends my presentation, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay. Councilmember San Antonio.
Do we have public? Oh, we do. Do you want, go to public.
That's Ron Meddak with time donation from Molly Haley.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and Councilwoman, and staff. My name's Ron Meddak, co-Leavenhein. I just wanted to come tonight very briefly to, since I was a person, the citizens came forward asking for a fire station in Leavenhein about a year and a half ago, and that resulted amazingly to myself in a $50,000 allocation by city council at that time to look for a site. And now, a year and a half later, we're making a lot of progress, and I wanted to really congratulate the council and staff on all of this, and especially Chief Gordon for his marvelous program that he put forward. And your support is so important, people in Leavenhein are very thankful. In Chief Gordon's program, part of it is very important, is brush management, and we've been doing our part on Brickside Lane in Leavenhein. And I wanted everybody to know that we had work parties out there. Mayor Ayers attended one, and Councilman San Antonio attended another, and I'm sure they were both impressed by how many neighbors we had out there and how many garbage cans or refuse cans we filled with material. So I wanted to just give an update on that, because we obtained a $25,000 grant via U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And we had a local botanist who worked in the Carlsbad office, who helped us with that, Jonathan Snap Cook. And unfortunately, I wanted everybody to know that with Doge and Elon Musk's so-called streamlining of government, they did a lot of damage to U.S. fish and wildlife, where a lot of environmentalists that are truly dedicated to the environment in our country were, including my daughter-in-law. And unfortunately, Jonathan was not able to continue working there. There was a lot of intimidation, threats, actually, and a lot of the people left, and he decided to go elsewhere. And in the meantime, we wanted to test the grant, so we submitted a $1,500 invoice to the Fish and Wildlife and federal government. Normally, that should have been taken care of in two to three weeks' time. It's a submit and then get reimbursed situation. It's seven months later, we've sent several demand letters, and they've given us nothing. So we've got a situation in the country, unfortunately, where when dealing with this part of the federal government at least, it's like sort of dealing with a deadbeat dad. So we're not that hopeful, we're going to continue to try to get that money. In the meantime, we have gotten help from the Nature Collective. They gave us a very good deal on eliminating rundo, arundo, which is an invasive plant. They use an herbicide, and we have eight stands of brown arundo now. It's not going to be reproducing, that was a great step forward. And they also had a grant for St. John's Wort, which is another invasive species, and they've done a lot of work in Spooks Canyon. If anybody walks that route, you'll see it. That's very good for fire prevention. There are large areas that have been cleared out. So that's it. Now you have an update, you know what we're doing out there. Thank you very much for all your efforts.
I think now, Councilmember San Antonio.
I just want to say thank you for the report, that it's comprehensive. I know that this is something that Leavenhein needs. I know that, I live out there, Ron, Bruce, it's a long time coming, and I'm excited that we found a spot. I'm excited that, for all the things that are coming forward in the future, I know that, I just live in there, you know, obviously, neighbors, Sarah Lifton lives just a couple doors away from me, and I know she's very excited. So she's worked very diligently at trying to get a fire station out there, along with the Leavenhein Fire Council. So I just want to say thank you. I know it's a lot of hard work. I know that a lot has gone into this, and I continue, I'm looking to continue to try to support the fire department and you, and hopefully, we can get this pushed through in the coming years. Thank you.
And did I hear a motion to approve there?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I thought I heard it. It was kind of quiet, but, and I will second that motion. Couple of questions, though, for me, too, and I really appreciate the update. When is the next SAFER grant, period? You know, when do we apply, when would they be awarded?
I looked on their website, and it didn't have the exact date, but it's
Roughly.
About a year from now, exactly.
So it could fit in. It could fit in with if we change how we submit, and we have more matching. And I assume there are other potential, but SAFER is the big one. And in the past, what's a typical size of a SAFER grant? Million, two million, five million?
It depends what's being asked for, how many full-time employees, right? So I believe, looking at the El Cajon one, I think it was a little over $1 million.
Okay.
But yeah, in those areas, there are other departments that are more rural, that have a lot more need for funding for full-time employees, and they've gotten six full-time employees, whatever that's going to cost.
And is it typically just for employees, or would it cover new engines, or?
It's for staffing, yeah. SAFER grants for staffing.
For staffing, okay, great. Let's see. So yeah, I'm all for seconded, and if there's nobody else, I'll call the question at this point, because.
That motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item 10F, which is introduction of the ordinance to adopt and amend the 2025 California Fire Code and 2025 California Building Standards Code into the Insinitas Municipal Code. And contact persons are Senior Fire Marshal Villa Gomez and Building Official Romero and Planning Manager Maynard.
There are no speakers.
What's that? There are no speakers, okay.
Hi, Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for having us again. Yeah, thank you for introducing that. We have, like you said, Jordan Villa Gomez and Joe Romero here to assist with this fire code. There was a good question during our council briefings about how this has a nexus to some of the conversations we've had with the community and with the council themselves. And so I just want to do a quick introduction of how some of these amendments came to be, right? So we've had the Public Health and Safety Commission recommendations that were provided through through, one, the Enceance Wildfire Gap Analysis and Workshop. We've had their work plan and the comments and concerns they've expressed to us about wildfire preparedness as well as evacuations and the vegetation management. We've looked through a lot of the public comments that happened with the gap analysis. And we've been out in the community, whether it's with certain community members that are concerned about certain developers or developments that are coming in. And we've tried to coalesce all of that information to build the best fire code that we can that helps our community, right? So I think when we look through these resident concerns, we have evacuation, gridlock, single-access roads, overgrown vegetation, density and multifamily housing, older homes that are vulnerable to ember ignition, and unequal wildfire protection where we're only focusing on Olivenheim. Those are direct quotes that we've gotten through some of our community outreach. And so when we're looking at some of these code amendments and the fire code changes, some of this stuff is directly related to what the community has been asking us to look at, right? We can't make every change that the community is asking us. We still have to have what's called technical findings in a report that shows that there is some nexus to safety when we're doing these amendments. So with that, I know that our acting fire marshal, Jordan Villa Gomez, has put a lot of work into these amendments and this fire code, as well as Joe Romero helping out. And I'm going to turn it over to them and let them talk more than me this time.
Thank you, Chief, for that great introduction. Good evening, council, mayor, deputy mayor, city manager. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on the 2025 Fire Code Local Amendments. So objectives for tonight, we're going to do the introduction of the ordinance and overview, go over some key changes and updates. Part of that is going to be the wildfire protection and introduction of the Wildland Urban Interface Code, and then next steps in implementation. First off, going through the agenda and what's required for ordinances. This is environmental compliance. We do not, we are exempt from CEQA for this ordinance because it's really guarded to safety and meets the general plan. And then the fiscal impact, there's no direct costs associated with this ordinance. Alignment with city goals, as Chief just went over, it's also in line with the general plan, as well as in line with the Olivenheim Fire Safe Council and the Public Health and Safety Commission goals as well. The other thing that it really does, some of the changes we've made and proposed, it opens up grant opportunities. There's two specific items that are required for a lot of multiple grants in regards to fire safety and wildfires. So we'll go over those a little bit later. Why update now? We were previously here in September. The fire codes were adopted, along with the building codes, energy codes, on September 24th. But we wanted to come back and put more implementation, take our time, make sure that it's going to apply locally to the needs of our community. Local amendment authority, as Chief discussed, any amendments to the codes have to have findings, and they're based on topographical, geological, and climatic. Ours are directly backed up by the multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan specifically for Encinitas. And you can find that in the ordinance itself. Getting right into the changes, modifications was a section that was changed, and the biggest part of that is for local cost recovery. If amendments and changes are required for certain sites that have constraints, this gives us the ability and flexibility to recover costs and also provide the right amount of safety for our community in regards to multiple different ways, fire apparatus, in lieu fees, things like that. The next section that we revised is ensuring emergency vehicle access. The requirements haven't changed in this section. This is all applied the same way today. It's just more clear and concise. So when someone looks at it, they don't have to ask for a lot of clarification. We get a lot of questions in regards to fire access, and this is going to hopefully help clear that up, so we don't have to field as many questions. It also shows transparency. It also helps with parking and traffic calming measures, specifically calling out width of parking spaces and the way it's written per type of road will help transparency and align with the parking and traffic needs of the city. Another amendment that we made is secondary access requirements. After doing research, this is actually already amended and adopted in a previous code from 2016, but for some reason, it was removed in past cycles. But what this does is provides a local amendment that's more strict in the code. Right now, the code calls out a secondary access road being needed for 200 or more homes. And this is going to reduce it to allow better fire access, as well as egress capabilities that are in line with the information that we've received that Chief went over earlier. Enhanced fire protection systems, most of the, some of the changes were really minor. Class-one stand pipes was always required in three levels or more. This was just, the change to that section was for stairways. It specifically called out enclosed stairways, and not all buildings have an enclosed stairway. So we want to capture all of those buildings that have that. Other stuff is code cleanup for automatic sprinklers, basically tying it to the building and planning department so that their definitions of remodel or new construction aligns with how we're applying those requirements. As well as a couple of changes to the mid-rise building section. We have a couple more requirements, including the IRK systems, which is the emergency radio Fire protection system updates, this is just an overview of what's already included in the fire code, but I thought it'd be good to add just for clarification on things that we may not have amended because it's already going to be included, which includes a lot of things for lithium-ion battery storage and operations. The biggest change for this year was introduction of a new book into the codes. The California Fire Code is part of the Building Standards Commission's code, and there's building code, residential code, electrical code, and fire code. This year, they reorganized and pulled multiple sections out and reorganized it into one book called the C-WOOE Code, California Wildland Urban Interface Code. It's basically a one-stop shop for everything you need to do to build something in those hazard severity zones. Makes it a little bit easier for people to navigate. Includes Chapter 7A, Building Construction, Chapter 49, Title 14, Government Code, and Health and Safety Code, all in one place. Some of the amendments we made, which I mentioned earlier, is vegetation management. Adding these requirements is in line with the Olivenheim Fire Safe Council input, Public Health and Safety Commission input, input from the community and various events, as well as meets our strategic goals as well. These specific, this specific item is one of the items that you need to check off a box that says your eligibility for grants. And then, real quick, just on that last slide, we're already doing that last one for vegetation management alongside the road out in Olivenheim on Ranch of Santa Fe, Manchester, El Camino, Lone Jack. But this gives, this putting it in the code makes it a requirement, which gives us more ability to apply it across the board. Defensive space standards, this is just kind of an outline of what the California WOOE Code is doing. Fire-resistant vegetation is included, trees and shrubs, clearance from zones have to be limbed up, which is part of defensive space. The C-WOOE Code always, also goes into access requirements. It's everything in one place. And then our amendment would be to prevent the ignition of fire spread along roadways and evacuation corridors. The other requirement that we're amending in the C-WOOE Code is the wildfire vent requirements. If you're in the high or the very high hazard severity zone, you, and you build a new building or house, you have to put wildfire ember-resistant vents on your structures. What it doesn't capture is remodels and additions. So if someone's doing a re-roof and they're going to replace their vents, they wouldn't be required to do the wildfire vents. This requirement, an amendment to the code, would require that, which is another box check for trying to apply for grants, would be a construction, a higher-than-minimum-level construction protection for homes. This is a low-cost fix that people can do for their homes. We actually have a low-cost retrofit list on our website. And I think during the research we did before we wanted to implement this, I think the most expensive vent I found across four different companies was $50. The last section we went through was cost recovery provisions. This section hasn't been updated since 1989. If you look at the red lines in the ordinance, it's definitely old. Talking to finance, I think the fees that were in line with the old code, I think was like $25. So we wanted to go back and update this and help us recover costs so that we can fund things like a fire station and new fire apparatus. Part of that is false alarm policy. During the Fire Chief's update, I believe, two weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, he mentioned the statistics. And I think nine percent, I think of the calls that we've experienced in the last two to three years are false alarms. We are working to try to get a new program, which I think we just got approved today, was the Compliance Engine. It's free for jurisdictions, and it helps us notify people who need to do work on their fire alarms and fire sprinkler systems. They're required to submit that information to us and do their maintenance yearly and five-year as well. This helps give us, we will give two free false alarm calls, but on the third one, we want to put this information in there so that we can start recovering costs for multiple calls for places that may not be taking care of their systems the way they should be. The recommended action for the item, this is the introduction and first reading of the ordinance. This enhances safety requirements and strengthens fire protection measures. We're going to be, part of this is meeting state compliance, and then also supporting our emergency response and needs as a fire department. Next step, today's is the introduction, like I stated, for the ordinance number 2025-21. Moving forward, if the council so chooses to, December 10th would be the next public hearing for the second reading, and then implementation would take effect and align with the rest of the fire and building codes that would take effect on January 1, 2026. And that's the end of my presentation, and we stand by for any questions.
Okay. And we have no public, so we'll go straight to Councilmember San Antonio.
Thank you for this. I know that some of these were all being put forward previous to this adoption, so, but I just want to say thank you because I know some of the stuff we're dealing with right now with some developers, and I know that hopefully, that some, these will be, these amendments are going to put those, we always talk about putting up guardrails for the future. Hopefully, these are going to, these protections are going to put public safety, obviously, at the forefront. But I think it also protects the, it protects us at the same time, protects the needs for the existing neighborhoods, as well as some developments that are to come. I also love that there's a, that this does put you guys in a good position for some of the future grants. That's pretty awesome. I know we talked about it in our little briefing as well, so that's great.
Okay. Councilmember O'Hara.
Yeah, I think this is a giant step in the right direction, and I want to thank you guys for all the time you put into this. I had a couple of questions. In your presentation, where you under modifications adds a local cost recovery mechanism on that page, you go into cost recovery, fiscal responsibility and equity, administrative transparency, flexibility and safety, and resource planning, when you get to that. I don't know if I want to put the page up or not. You can. Your presentation. And I'm going to refer to the, in your, what you gave us, page eight, 10F, page eight as well.
This one?
Staff report, page eight, but then, this is, no, this is modifications. Yeah, that's the one. I'm a little, it's a little vague, to be honest, on the in lieu recovery fees. And I don't want to go into the staff recovery page. It says, "In accordance with Health and Safety Code, Sections 13146 and 13146F, the C-VEN Encinitas Fire Department and his or her authorized representatives shall enforce within its jurisdiction the building standards and other regulations of the state fire marshal and charge a fee not to exceed the estimated reasonable cost of providing the service for which the fee is charged pursuant to 66014 of the government code." I'm seeing a lot of gray area in there, and I'm looking for a little more explanation, or I'm looking to see what isn't here that we could bring back to make this clearer.
Okay, yeah. A lot of that is meeting and referencing the Health and Safety Code, which gives us the authority to implement things like that. It is vague on purpose just to allow us some room to apply it and how we want to apply it. The flexibility in it would be so, depending on if there is an alternative means and method that's being presented to us, then we could specifically apply it to a specific need. If that's a taller building that requires another ladder truck or a certain piece of equipment or tool, like, you know, it could be anything, a helicopter to, you know, whatever the needs would be to meet the service for that, it would give us the flexibility to say, okay, this is what it's causing that we need.
You can see where the slippery slope is there, though. Hey, we need a helicopter, and you need to build a building.
Let me jump in. So let me give you some examples, right? So right now, we don't have any four, five, six-story buildings. So if we did approve, if the council approved at that height of a building at some point, we would have different operations. From mid-rise to high-rise, our truck would now need four people on that because that's what's required for mid-to-high-rise operations. And so we could use that as part of the AMMR to say, okay, because your building now requires this operation, we would have them, in make-believe world right now, we would say you could play for three of the FTEs, for three years of an FTE that we have to put in there. Now, there is probably some kind of proportionality that we would have to use. If they're the only seven-story building in Encinitas, then our truck operations would probably require that to be 100% of them to pay for that, right? But if we're looking at another example of having a development that comes in and the hydrants are at a larger than, a larger spaced than the code requires, but other residential homes might be around, they would, the proportionality would have to be, how many residents are there? What is that percentage of operational deficiency, I'll say, would they be in charge of? So it had, there has to be a nexus to the operational demand that they are now providing to this city. Does that help?
Yeah, but I think it works because I trust you.
I appreciate that.
And ten years now, when you're retired, and I'm retired, and somebody else is here whom I may not trust, and someone else is there who these people may not trust, I'm a little concerned about the writing of this. And I could see how somebody could say, I really want a, I think it'd be awesome if Encinitas Fire Department had a hook and ladder. Man, and a second one that goes up seven stories would be awesome. And Goodson comes along and says, I can help you out with that.
We're marking this tape, just to let you know.
Okay. But, you know what I mean?
I understand what you're saying.
So, and I'm not, I think you go in the right direction. I don't think the residents bear the protection in this that they need. And so I'm looking for you to come back with something a little bit more specific and that doesn't have that, well, we'll play it as we see it. That hasn't served the city very well so far. We need, we need it to be, for your protection, because you're going to put your name on this, and our protection, residents who want to be safe, we need something a little bit more objective, for lack of a better way to put it. And so, so I'd like to see this come back a little more vetted. I think this is, this is not worded right.
We can definitely do that. I know we used verbiage from other cities that this exact verbiage is in, but...
This is based on zone and county, other jurisdictions as well. Plus, I think the way it's written this way is to not paint some, yourself into a corner as well. It gives, it gives the fire code authority the options to apply it... It gives, it gives the fire code authority the options to apply it multiple different ways and the code gives that.
I get it, but we're currently in a lawsuit for declaratory relief because we took a lot of leeway and decided we were going to interpret one law one way and not another. This is already going down that path and that makes me really uncomfortable. And I think it makes our residents really uncomfortable. So I would just like to see you come back. I think it's in your best interest if it's not wiggle, if it's not wiggle proof, because it's clear for you to say this is, these are the rules, to the developer, to whoever's trying to build, or whatever we're trying to do here. And it actually empowers you versus them saying, well, we're going to do it this way and we're going to keep coming back until you acquiesce. So I think, I think, I would, I'm just, I'm not going to budge too much in that one. I think I'd like to see that come back better vetted. So another thing I'd like to add, I'd like to, kind of on the heels of that, I guess just jumping off from there, the, I would like to see staff, legal counsel and the fire department explore a process by which there is a documentation of, just what we talked about, when discretion is used, that is official. Right now, I know in our, one of our documents, it's just the fire marshal's, the fire marshal's stamp. And I think we want to encourage you to use your discretion when appropriate, but we also want to develop a standard operating procedure that works within the city. And so what I'd really like to see included in this is, if we can have this explored and see if we can include this, is a documentation that marches when, that marks when you thought it was appropriate to use discretion, so that when the city receives that discretion, it is marked as we've used discretion, this is no longer an objective piece. It's a marker that allows you to do your job, separate of what the city has in mind, as you do now, as we want you to do. But then when it comes to the city, so you'll be helping the city, the city recognizes in our planning process that this is discretionary or objective. And that way, it takes all the emphasis off you, protects you, gives you in the discussion with a developer, whoever, the ability to say, oh, these are, these are the objective standards, and if they want to stick to it, they can, but they know they're not, and you don't have to get anywhere, you just sign the paper, it says, okay, they didn't stick to it. It comes to the city and the city now has that marker before we get down the road that hits the bell, so we know right away, hey, this is, discretion has been used. This may not be ministerial anymore, we need to now check. Rather than get past 180 days declaratory relief or something similar to that, that probably could have been helped way before it ever got in front of council, way before it got to the Planning Commission, by having a form that just marked it a certain way so that planning staff and development knew, like, okay, this is how this was decided and this is now discretionary. And then it's off your hands, they do what they want to do, you've done your job as we want you to do, but you've marked it that this discretion has been used and it's a clear form that comes across the desk. I think I'm making, I think I'm finding that probably too far. All right. So that would be my, that would be, I'd like to put a motion through to accept this, but add that, add that direction to staff, fire department and council.
Okay, do you yield or?
I yield, yes.
Okay. I was, I'm going to come down very somewhere in some ways. I'm going to ask some questions first and I think that'll help highlight page seven. You talk about curb to curb, curb face to curb face. And I'm trying to get to objective standards because there are many projects now that we cannot deny for safety reasons unless they fail an objective standard. And I think that's exactly where Councilmember O'Hara is going. So in this case, it's curb face to curb face, 24, what if it's just asphalt with no curb? We need to, we need to cover that in here because otherwise it becomes a discretion of what you consider the curb face and therefore we're not, no longer violating an objective and therefore we can't deny it based on it. So I'd like to see in the case of dimensions of road width, we have rolled curb, is a rolled curb, the curb edge, the inside or the outside edge? Asphalt, where you just have asphalt, is the minimum dimension where the asphalt falls off or does it go further? And you could even argue gravel, too. I think we need to cover that and this is because of the world we've been forced into by the state. It's a much more objective world, which is, I think, exactly what you've been saying. So there, there's one, one, page seven. Page 29, it talks about parcels and whether or not, oops, hang on, three or more parcels as far as having a cul-de-sac. Is it really parcels or is it units? I don't, you know, because if it's a single-family home with, but we're getting into an era now where a single parcel could have eight units on it under some of the new, new laws, some of the SB, SB9 laws and their other cases. So I think we need to put three or more parcels or no more than so many units in those kind of things. So there's some details in here that have a lot less to do with fire code and a lot more to do with development code in this modern era, this new world, new brave world we're in with the state. So I think along the lines of what Councilmember O'Hara is asking for, I would ask that the planning department go through with a fine-tooth comb, based on some of the comments you get from me and from others. I think I talked about this during my briefing, levels versus stories. And so I know in the Clark case in particular, we talked about the measurement of that height, of any height being measured from the top of the first floor. I'd like to see that explicitly defined in the code, in our code, so that there's no ambiguity in the future of how you measure the 40-foot height of a building. So I'll take Clark as an example, being 39 feet tall, you know, where was that measure base and how do we go? The other thing I would do is use the term stories in here and planning already defines stories very clearly in our, and I like the fact you use levels some places, but then we throw stories in there. And we're going to get into an ambiguity and potentially a discretion, which will prevent us from using stories as a objective standard to fail. What I'm looking for is in the, in the case where projects start exceeding three and four and five stories, let's say four and five stories in the city of Encinitas, we, that's a different animal than we have. We do have some four-story buildings, but, but when we get into four and five-story buildings, that's a completely different animal. I think we need to be, have objective, strong safety requirements that make sure that we do not fall behind as all these density bonus waivers come in saying, oh, we just add another story, we add another story. And they can do that today, but we need, I need to have some protection for the safety of the residents in the form of objective standards. So that, that's another area I would go back. And where I could, I would incorporate height definition in that, too, that you could say so many levels or greater than so many feet in height triggers this objective safety standard. And then we define exactly where we mean by that height and those stories. That's pretty much, I think that's right in lines with what that, and with that, I will yield to Deputy Mayor Lyons.
I had a lot of questions, too, and thank you, Chief, for answering most of them before the meeting and they were answered to my satisfaction. I did catch some wording that I think you would agree, would probably need to be sorted out a little bit, and that's on page 13 of the packet. It's associated with vegetation, sorry, I went beyond. You did a really good job, by the way, I think, being sensitive to what the common understanding of what vegetation is flammable. I think you, it looks like to me you worked with the knowledge that we've gained as a city about invasives and their flammability and natives and their flammability to indicate that there are certain plants that are more flammable that we want to stay away from. And then there's a list of plants that don't contribute to the fuel load, but it's not necessarily an exotics versus natives. Except for on page 13, there's some, it looks like remnant language under A, climate conditions, where it's meant to just be talking about, we live in an arid environment and so forth. But it does say in here that the coastal sage scrub and chaparral fuels are, contribute, do contribute to fast-moving wind-driven fires. And I don't know that that coordinates exactly with what you're saying elsewhere in the document. I think you're saying there are plants that contribute to the fuel, to the fuel which contributes to fast-moving fires, but I don't know that in the rest of the document, you're calling out the native coastal sage scrub and chaparral fuels as the only culprit. I think there's culprits across both the natives and the exotics. We've given a lot of time and attention to talking about how the eucalyptus and the palm trees are just so flammable and really control of those is going to go a long ways towards control of fuels and, and that not all of the natives do contribute to fuels. So I'd like, I'd like you to pay attention to this paragraph, if you could, to make sure the wording is consistent with what's being used elsewhere in the document. Thank you.
And Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. I think where we're going, and I think you guys are understanding this, and I appreciate all of this work, I know it's been extensive and a long time coming. Can we do a, with a flow chart of sorts, you know, if this, then that type of objective standards? Because we live in such a, you know, we have the microclimate, right? That's kind of one of the catchphrases here in Encinitas. That's why this one-size-fits-all for the entire state, you know, flat Fresno has a different standard than we have the, obviously we have the coastal commission we have to deal with, that has a whole, you know, their own thing. So we have stuff down by the lagoon that's different than out by Leavenhan, then down, out, you know, different parts of our city. So off the bluff, there's, I almost feel like it needs to be, to kind of cover what you guys are trying to do, attempting to do, but it flows down, you know, where we are and it almost needs different sections for the town that we live in because it, it sounds like you want to, or it looks like you want to speak.
Yeah, I think the code is if, then, then, then this.
Yeah.
Right? So when we look at the chapters of the code and then you work down each topic, those topics only are for that, that chapter, if you will, right? And then there's the exceptions that we're talking about of discretionary.
Correct.
But because the exceptions are provided in the code, I think the argument is, is it ministerial versus discretionary? We're not going to get into that today. I think what you're asking is to provide some more objective standard to, let's say the road width is 24 feet and the exceptions are if you can't meet these three exceptions, then you can do these AMRs, right? So we can provide those objective standards, but at the end of the day, the discretion is to the fire marshal or the fire chief to say, you can do these AMRs to make it either equivalent to the safety or more than safety, right? So if I'm, if I'm understanding right, you'd like it to be a little bit more objective upfront for why we're doing the AMR and then be able to provide that, I guess, report back to say, this is why we had to do the AMR. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, and then, yes, that's, I think that's what, he's talking to all of us, I believe, but the idea is, yes, that's, I think, where we're getting at, to where it gets to that, it holds a line in the sand and then beyond that point allows for that discretion, you know? They have to come, they have to come this way and then we can go that way, kind of thing. We can kind of give in the middle, but, you know, right now, the, the power is in, basically in the developer's hands specifically and what they, the direction that they want to go, because we don't have, our code hasn't been tightened up like this '89, you know, some of this stuff. So that's where I think that we're ultimately what's up.
No, I've.
I think that's ultimately what we're trying to get at as a, as a, so instead of, I think it's going to, it looks like this is going to have to go back for, do you have another comment? No. Yeah. It just, it looks like it's going to have to go back for some, some tweaks before we get to our, our first reading, if you will. So I think for a direction, where we can, where we can see these, the spots where we can tighten that up to hold a no-kidding number, a specific measurement, whatever that is, a metric that is objective. And then beyond that was where the discretion would come.
I think the hard part to have some of those objectives is that we have to have the technical findings and report to back it, right? And we can't necessarily, we don't have that at the moment, right? We're using some more restrictive ways that we can do it right now. So we would have to figure out how to get those technical reports completed and if they even apply, what we would try to change as an objective way.
You know, going back to what Councilmember O'Hara was saying, maybe it's, maybe it's one of those things that we, instead of overdoing it right now, we bring up a more routine update. So instead of, instead of letting it go from 1989 or wherever we're going to update something, we just update every couple, whatever the right timing is so that there, so that when the person retires, you know, it can't go too far without it getting out of, out of hand where you have some new chief that's got a different direction, new council and new setup. So it's, it's in every, whatever, and a lot of times it'll just be, I won't say pencil whipped, but it'll just be, you know, a lot of just carryover, but it'd be easier to update that way versus, I think what you guys have done is allowed us some wiggle room because we don't want to specifically paint ourselves into a corner by going so objective that we can't, nobody can build anything in this town ever again, which arguably wouldn't be the worst thing, but.
If I may make a statement to you.
Correct, but I get that, but the idea is we don't want to point ourselves into the corner and then now it's that, it's that tweak that we've gone so far that it can't recover.
But in order to deny certain projects, we need objective safety findings and that, that's what's missing in our current code. That's what we ran into. And so this is the opportunity, in my opinion, you know, get basics in there.
Lock it, yeah.
And, and that's why I wanted to get back to road widths. You know, you could say, I know it says like the one example, 24 feet, it could be objectively, you have to have an absolute minimum of 20 feet, but that, I'm sorry, no, objective minimum of a certain amount, but our, the guideline is 24 feet for that unless you have mitigations, but at no, under no circumstance may it go below, I'm picking a number, 20 feet. And for each one of those different classes, you could have a lower minimum that we just say, below that, there's no way, that's unsafe, even with all the, what is it, AMRs or whatever?
AMRs, yeah.
Yeah, so.
If I could, if I could say one thing, just to kind of address some of the questions you guys have, the new code, so the stuff we're bringing to you tonight, these are like amendments to the code, so obviously the code's so big, we're not going to put it in there and expect you guys to read it all. But based off the code that's already being adopted, that already was adopted in September, it did break down this new code cycle. They were aware of that, ICC was aware of that and the state was, and so they did put stricter language in there. It's just not within our amendments because we're not amending it. So for that, for equivalency criteria for modifications for AMRs, it states, alternative means, methods, designs and methods, construction shall for the purpose intended be not less than the equivalent of the prescribed in this code with respect to all the followings as applicable. And it's, here's where it gives more of, I think, the information you're looking for. There's six objective standards that have to be met and it's quality, strength, effectiveness, durability, safety, other than fire safety and fire safety. And then to break that down even more, it says the modifications must show compliance with the intent and purpose of the code and cannot reduce health, health, safety, life safety, fire safety, structural safety and accessibility.
So do we have to define all those? Do we have to define those or are those defined?
No, those are already defined in the code.
Okay.
Yeah, but the whole point is those were not objectives, those were all subjective. And so with the new development code, they have to be objective. It literally has to be something that two different people will not come to a different conclusion. It has to be, this has to be painted black. Then this case, it has to be painted red and be two feet wide. You know, literally, that's the type of code we have to get down to, safety code and building code. That's why we spent so much time and it's not easy to codify objectively the various requirements, so.
And one of the good things.
I just wanted to point that out before.
No, I appreciate that, great. In an earlier conversation, the mayor pointed out that all of our prior, you know, buildings up until Clark were on major thoroughfares. So when we were talking about fire lane, it was, which is what we're still talking about, right? Is it from the firehouse or is it on the premise of that property? And, you know, this is the first time that we've had a development and as we get more development, it's going to be stuck in more nooks and crannies throughout the town. And so I'm almost wondering if it's more section by section or if, and I don't know, because all of Cardiff, there's, there's easements that we still own that we'd have to take back, but people would lose two feet of their front yard. Same thing with Clark, the people would lose a certain portion of their front yard on the east side there.
So what having the objective standard does is it makes the developer have to make a decision. Liable, but also have to make a decision.
a decision, liable, but also have to make a decision and be aware that they are now, that this condition exists.
Yeah.
And it empowers the fire department to say, hey, we're going to use our discretion on this, but we want you to know that we're using discretion. And because of that, your product, your project is no longer by right or may not be by right or ministerial. And they don't even have to say it this way. They just fill out the form that says, we have made a discretionary decision. And then the city decides at that point. So we're, we're letting them do their job, but you're doing it better because you have a better objective standards that you can hold and be accountable to and use, know when you are correctly using that, that discretion better and in a way that's clearer to the developer when they're making their decision of whether or not they're going to ask you to use discretion or not, so that when it comes to the city, the city then knows discretion was or was not used and that affects this entire process. And at that point, it actually takes you guys, it takes you out of having to be in the conversation. You've done your job, now it's the city's job to, 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 to work with the developer on what that is. And they may come back to you because they may say, you know what, we decided we don't want to do this discretionary measure because we don't want to do sequel or whatever it is that triggers, right? But they come back to you, you've handed off to the city, you're never in the conversation of, well, what does the developer need, what is it? Instead, it's what is the objective standard? Okay, you didn't follow the objective standard, we're going to let the city know that we didn't, we.
Yeah, yeah, we get it. It's, it's objective, it's done. So what, what were you going to say, Josh?
Nothing, I'm good. So, so where do we go from here? I would like to get Development Services' opinion on what Councilmember O'Hara was saying, that if we use, if the fire department exercises discretion, does that, does that move a by right project out of ministerial and back, or back into discretionary? I'm not sure I understand it fully and I think that, that information. I would also like to maybe continue this and bring it back with Development Services here. After the, together with Fire, they've investigated some of these.
I would do that, but I would only do that if we had our special counsel discuss that with us.
I, I would throw in special counsel there too.
Because I think that's the only answer we're going to get.
I think you're right. I, I meant to say that too. And I, I forgot, so.
I, I would be into that and I think it's, it's prudent at this point. I think it gets us to where we're trying to, what we're attempting to do, but I also think, like you said, it gets the Development Services back over here to try to help.
Now, our goal is, can we bring it back in time to, to get it done by next, by January 1st?
I was going to defer to Chief Gordon because we have, yeah, because the thing about ordinances is we have to, we have to reintroduce, if you see this, we have to reintroduce and then we don't have enough time to adopt before January 1st. Unless.
Can we adopt with the idea to re-adopt it or to keep updating until we, does this is adopted now?
Yeah.
And then we can, we can adopt it as is and if we can go forward so that way we can get it actually done for January 6th or 26th and then if there's more to tighten up, we just adopt a new ordinance.
Chief, could you, yeah, could you do that? Because I know you want to get it adopted, but we, can we make changes after that at any time?
Yeah, so we've already adopted the fire code.
Yeah.
Right? So the 2025 fire code, the Cewoo code, that's already been adopted. What we're talking about is amendments tonight, right? So these amendments that we're bringing to you are for your consideration and then we would have to adopt them by December 10th. Now, I do believe we can make changes before the adoption in December 10th. And I'm kind of looking at Kathy because I know she's the guru with this.
If you have significant changes, you're going to have to introduce.
Yeah, you have to reintroduce.
So what we'll do is we'll work with, for fire prevention, we'll work with Development Services and council.
Special counsel.
Special counsel to come back to you with what these changes would be and then we're probably going to have to push that December 10th possibly.
Can I, can I, can I hop in and maybe what I thought we were talking about was go ahead and move adoption tonight, but at the second reading, I'd like a report back from Development Services, Fire and Colentino or whoever we choose. Colentino would be my preference because I think he knows, on advice that we should look at to adopt in a future update and we can schedule that out in the new year and we can, therefore we hit our code adoption, we get all the changes in, but we have, I think up here, we've just been burned more than once maybe, but certainly on certain projects.
Unintended.
We want to, we want to, yeah, really, that was, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, I, I want to make sure we are getting fully informed on what we could do better even, and if it means we bring it back in the spring to, to adopt a modification and some more objective standards. And I think we had some key questions that came up tonight. So I'll make that a motion since we have two minutes.
So we had a motion, there was no second.
A second.
For Councilmember O'Hara.
Yeah, Luke.
Oh, no, second to his initial motion. So you get what I'm saying, we're going to adopt it now and then we're going to just keep tightening it.
So you're introducing as is.
So I, I do want to know, do, can we, I want, I want to know if we can create this layer of accountability. Can, do we need to do that? And that would be a question for Deputy Assistant Manager, Assistant City Manager or City Manager to answer or legal counsel. Can we move forward with this adoption, but can we also, because all of this is great, but if we still are baffling around, kicking around without any explanation of what happens when discretion is used versus an objective measure in the process, that's interoperation procedures, we're going to end up back here figuring out our next declaratory relief.
Well, I think our declaratory relief would actually be back by then and we would have some answers.
No, 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 no. I'm just talking about going forward every time something comes up. So I, I can tell you that there are three projects out there that have used, that are attempting to use discretionary measures, whether it be fire or other, and we need to figure out to make sure that they don't fall through the cracks at City Hall, that when they make discretionary measures, which they should, it's their job and we want them to do, somebody at City Hall knows that, knows that they did.
Correct, but do you understand what I'm saying? We're, we're going to adopt it tonight so that we can tighten, we can retune this up.
I get it, but I don't want to, I don't want to wait a year if we can't include this in the process of what we're deciding on tonight.
That's why I was asking for a report back.
Right.
Of the legalities of what we could do in preparation for a spring update.
I get, I get.
And is there anything that would preclude us from making those modifications in, in spring or, you know, January even?
You'd have, you'd have an entire code to look at. So like right now, if I'm understanding correctly, this is just a piece, this is not your entire fire code in here. These are just the amendments to, instead of adopting the fire codes as the state has adopted them, we're making some modifications to those.
They're amendments.
So if you put these amendments in there, then you can look at the entire code as a whole. Some of your comments may not fall into this, they might fall into other sections of the entire fire code.
Thanks for that.
I think I need a motion to extend 15 minutes or so.
Extend 15 minutes.
Okay. I got a motion, a second, did I hear a second down there at the end? Yeah. We're trying.
Yeah, no, I get it. I, yeah. I just, I couldn't think that that would probably even be better to get the read back.
I agree.
On the 10th with, with Colentino and some other stuff and that.
I get it, but we need, we need Colentino to, to chime in on what I'm talking about.
Yes.
And, and so I don't have, I don't hear confirmation, I hear that we're going to, we're going to look at the codes. I'm not talking about the codes. I'm talking about an inner process by which of communication that the fire department communicates to the city hall that has used discretion. Previously, that was the fire marshal stamp. Well, that didn't get the nod of staff that that was a discretionary use.
That's probably more Development Services at this point, right?
I don't know, but I want to make sure if this is our opportunity to do it, that it stays in there. So I'm, I'm not going to let this go unless we have confirmation, because if we put it in there and it's not the right thing to do, it's in there, it doesn't come back because there's nothing to do with it. But if we don't put it in there and we miss this opportunity.
I think if we try and get all this in, we won't get it in before the end of the year and therefore we'll get two readings in. And so the practical thing to do here is to adopt the code, the, the huge improvements and, but time with the second reading, a, an item, the same item would include a report back from legal, from Development Services and Fire, and they'd all be here in the meeting and we could go through some of the details of how should we structure objective code? And then we can start another item that we would come back with edited, updated fire code. And I just wanted to make sure there's nothing that would preclude us from doing that in early 2026 and implementing it then.
No, so the fire code has been.
I'm good with that, but, but we're still missing the item I'm asking for. And I want to make sure that this, we're not missing the opportunity to create that item.
No, so what it sounds like we'll do is, so if council's amenable, we would do the first reading tonight, so we'll introduce, okay? Then it's going to come back on December 10th. What we could do is normally we put the second reading on consent and it goes. What we could just do is we'll put it on action and then what we can do is we can bring back, in the meanwhile, we can talk to Michael Colentino, we can look at that. So we'll put that action, we'll put that item on action and we'll come back with that report as well, so that you can hear that. And then what we can do is if, if that works out, then we can look to go ahead and find out when we can amend again, if that'll work.
I guess what I'm, what I'm looking for, and I still don't quite hear it all the way in there, is I'm looking for something that triggers staff that is, whether it's weak, it comes in on red paper if it's discretionary and green paper if it's objective. And I don't hear that in here. I hear us talking about the codes, which is great.
That'll happen on the 10th, is what I believe.
Okay, as long as we're.
We can bring that process change back to you.
And this whole thing's recorded, so they're going to, it's not getting missed. Like we get that there's, something's got to trigger that it's gone down the discretionary path.
I get it, but we're, we got, we got Clark Avenue coming in because this wasn't in place in the first part and I want to make sure, I want to make darn sure we don't do it again.
Yep. And first and foremost, we have to get the legalities fully understood.
Correct.
And then the procedurals will support the legalities, but I, I agree with your procedurals too.
Okay, perfect. Obviously, it's a very important part of this.
Do we need a new motion or?
I think it's a, we had a motion without a second so far.
Well, no, we have one from you.
Oh.
Dealers with a second by Schaefer, and that was to introduce the ordinance tonight and then also to direct staff to bring back a report at the time of ordinance adoption with information from legal, Development Services and Fire regarding legalities and process.
Now, and I'm just checking, I thought we had a motion from O'Hara in there. Did I miss?
There was no second.
He withdraws, okay, so we're good. We have a motion and a second. You just read it back. Any questions on that? Okay, let's call a question.
A motion carries unanimously.
No.
Okay.
Get what you're trying to do.
With that, no informational items, no council-initiated items. City council member reports pursuant to AB 1234 will start down at the far end.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report.
Shoot. I can't find what I'm going to report. I'll report next time. City manager report.